As always, we'll call the meeting to order with a moment of silence. Stand, are there any moments silent dedication today for the board?
So you know, go and stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Tina. Are there any extra items not appearing on the agenda for today?
I'm not aware of any today, Mr. Chair.
We'll move right into our, oh, tell me, 901. Our 901 item. Timed items. Oh, we have it backwards here. We have the timed items and public input at 901. I know when we put this agenda out, there were, you know, we didn't expect to have the special meeting that we had yesterday. So going to move right into our consent agenda. And I will make an announcement on behalf of Eddie Crandall, our other supervisor. Supervisor Crandall is not going to be here today. He is attending a funeral, a loss in his family, and is not able to get on the call or on the meeting today as we move through today's agenda. So I just, I want to make that announcement for him. Okay, what I'd like to move to is our consent agenda. It's item number six. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. It can use being moved through without a lot of controversy. So are there any items that need to be pulled this morning from the board, the consent agenda items? All right, none from the board. We'll go ahead and open it up to the room. Are there any consent agenda items that need to be pulled? Jake, can you open up the room?
Yes, here, one second, please. All right, the floor is open.
If you need a shirt on, put your shirt.
Yeah, the floor is open. Any consent agenda items? Hearing none at this point, we'll go ahead and bring it back for approval for the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda 6.1 through 6.16.
Been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Can we please have the roll call vote?
All right, Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall's absent. Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. To our next item, we'll go back to, sorry about that, computers having trouble. Come on, sir. Okay, we have our timed items that we'll move to item, and we'll start with item. Our 901 item, five, our public input.
Mr. Chair, we have received a lot of email public input, which, as you can see in your agenda, we've attached it now to this item in Granicus. There was some confusion, as you know, about what, when Dr. Pace's report would be heard because it's typically heard on Tuesdays. And so there was a lot of public input along the lines of his report that were submitted for today. And so all those email public comments are attached and, and there's a lot of it. So we wanted to make sure you had it at, you know, where you can easily review it. And so in addition to that, I imagine you want to open up the room.
Yes. How many of these do we have? Fifty? All right. Now, obviously, too, just want to make sure that this is all going into the public record. And we had the two meetings back to back and, yeah, I do see a lot of overlapping requests here. Okay.
And it's also all been shared with Dr. Pace as well, to be sure he takes it into consideration.
Excellent. So we will go ahead and open up the room, Jake, for any.
Yes, here, let me unmute the floor. All right, the floor is open. If you'd like to comment, please state your first and last name.
My, my name is Frank Lynch, L Y N C H.
Yes, we can hear you, Frank.
So it's time to give my comment then, please?
Yes.
Fine. Again, this is Frank Lynch. You may remember me. I'm the president of the Lake Pillsbury Alliance. And I just wanted to speak very briefly this morning that the alliance, I, I think we probably share equal concerns about the new notice of intent partnership and their action to declare that the decommissioning of Scott Dam is part of their proposal to create a new successor entity to the, to PG&E. It's obviously highly presumptuous of them to take that action without including Lake County in that decision-making process. And it's a short-sighted, in my opinion, obviously, action in a time of climate change to get rid of a dam. And looking what, what's been published to date, there's no clear conclusion. They're talking about a two-basin solution, but there's no clear conclusion that the water storage is available to adequately serve the Russian River side of the communities that benefit from the water stored at Lake Pillsbury. And there's also no mention at all of the ecosystem around the lake that has developed. And the sole focus is on fishery needs. Fishery needs are a pretty broad topic, and there's no consideration of comparative values of other actions that it could take to improve fisheries such as dealing with all these historic impact roads.
Right there.
Trails, railroads, past floods, historic timber processes, practices, the cannabis industry, rise in ocean temperatures. It's a lot of speculation. I'm sure there's a lot of science, but there's also the fundamental issue of, you know, the need for water storage. Just the, last week, I did listen in on Congressman Huffman's ad hoc committee because I was concerned what they would say. And there's really only token discussion of Lake County concerns. They said that they, you know, certainly wanted to benefit Lake County, but I'm, I'm concerned that what they're talking about is mitigation for Lake County is going to be a, a short-term, one-time payment to maybe offset some lost sales tax or maybe property value loss from the, you know, the decline of the lake. And I do recognize that Lake County has a lot of economic needs, but I don't think settling for a short-term one-time solution will do anything for the county in the long run and certainly won't benefit the many people on, in the holiday, this upcoming holiday weekend, if it wasn't for the coronavirus. I'm sure there'd be thousands of people. There historically are thousands of people, literally, who go to Lake Pillsbury on those long weekends. I think the county needs to think big. If they're going to accept some mitigation, you need to think big.
Three minutes.
Okay, John. I, i- if you can wrap it up pretty quickly, go ahead, John.
Okay, I think you need to think big. You could talk about a new off-site dam, you know, off-channel dam that could be built that would be fish-friendly, that could still serve as a recreational resource area. Lake County could also talk about declaring Lake Pillsbury a critical part of your infrastructure as part of the county's emergency management plan for wildfire management and wildfire protection. That's certainly based in science on a recent experience with fires and how Lake Pillsbury was crucial to help fight that fire last year, the year before. I think, you know, I just wanted to say the Lake Pillsbury Alliance wants to work with the county. We want to, if we can help in any way, I'm talking about in, you know, getting out to the public, even fundraising. We would like to work together and support you whenever action you take. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank. I appreciate you coming in and giving your public input. Thank you. Is there any, any other public input on item not appearing on the agenda today? Okay, here none. We'll bring it back to the board. Jake, go ahead and. All right, thank you very much. Moving along, agenda item 5.2, our 902 AM consent item, consideration of the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Return to Work, Work Site Prevention Protocol and Direction to Staff for the Reopening of the County Offices to the Public.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll present this item. So as the steps are being taken for our county to accelerate into, further into stage two for the reopening of local businesses, your board's ad hoc committee that consists of yourself, Mr. Chair, and Supervisor Sabatier have been continuing to meet with me and with department heads to concurrently plan for the reopening of county offices to the public. And with all of that in mind, we've drafted, we've drafted the attached protocol that we brought forward for your consideration today. And what we intend to do with your board's approval is have a self-certification process much like that being required of local businesses for reopening. So county departments would self-certify that their offices are in full and continuous compliance with this protocol. And self-certification forms would be posted at the entrance of each county office that, that each department has. And so if you've had an opportunity to review the protocol, it's got a number of components in it, starting with the personal protective equipment requirement. And we, we put this together following a survey that we did of all departments to get a sense of their readiness. And, and it appeared from that survey that it would be helpful to establish a standard for the types of PPE that should be maintained in each office. And so you'll see that there in the policy. Each office is to maintain a supply of PPE including masks, disinfecting wipes, or if those aren't available, spray disinfectant and paper towels, hand sanitizers, gloves for when employees wish to use them, and protective shields at customer service counters. This particular section goes on to talk about what employees should do if a member of the public comes in for services at a customer service counter and is not wearing a mask as required by your urgency ordinance. And basically allows staff to redirect the customer requesting service who is not masked and ask them to re-contact the department. So they will first put on a mask if they will, and if they will not, to make other arrangements for the provision of service without in-person interaction. There is also a provision here about facility signage. And as attachments to this protocol, there are a number of sign auctions covering a wide variety of relevant topics. And for our common areas in the courthouse, our public services director is poised to start posting those once, once this is approved. And then within the interior areas of our offices, we would ask department heads to do the same. As you well know, hand sanitizing is, is probably the simplest and most important single thing people can do to protect themselves. And so the next section reviews that. The section after that is social distancing. And the employees are going to need to continue to practice the six-foot social distancing. And in some cases, where offices are small, where places are cramped, employees will need to work flexible hours, staggered shifts. And also some offices are, are in the process of increasing the physical space between employees and, and the public by installing some protective shields, erecting partitions, putting markers on the floor to make sure when people are staging, they're at least six feet apart. Following the lead of our county librarian, who had done some research on the best practices for handling paper, and in his case particularly books, we've included a section on that. Although it is thought that the transmission of the virus through paper handling is considered to be relatively low, we want to provide our employees the option to wear gloves and, of course, regular reminders to wash their hands frequently. When it is possible, we'll also encourage that paper received from an outside source simply be set aside for 24 hours and, and then dealt with. The next section of the protocol talks about employee self-screening, symptom checking, temperature self-checks. And as your board is aware, according to Cal OSHA, as an employer, we are required to maintain a self-safe and healthy workplace for our employees. And so with that in mind, we're proposing this self-check section where, before an employee starts each day, for the safety of all of us, we ask that he or she ask themselves questions about whether they've been experiencing symptoms or whether they've been in contact with anyone who has the virus in the last 14 days. And if they do, they would be needing to self-isolate, contact their primary care provider, and notify their supervisor. Some of our departments have expressed a, a plan to provide no-touch thermometers for employees that want to do temperature self-checks. And I know that practice will be ongoing. It's, it's already being offered, in fact, in some offices and will soon be something made available to employees as well. We have some language in here about how to support employees who are at higher, highest risk for severe illness, those that are 65 and over or suffer from some other kind of health condition. For those employees especially, we continue to encourage that they shelter in place to the greatest extent possible, that we allow telework when possible and support flexible scheduling. We're recommending that meetings and training be canceled, postponed, or conducted electronically. In particular, we've had dialogue around the training of new employees, and we're asking departments to be very creative in, in finding ways to make that happen rather than the typical, typical training model where we tend to kind of hover over new employees where, while we're helping them learn. Hopefully, we can do that without infringing upon the social distancing requirement. For employee travel, we recommend that non-essential travel be canceled until further notice. And then we've also included some parameters around traveling when employees have to travel to the same destination, if at all possible. We want them to travel separately. When that is not feasible, we are asking that they wear face coverings when they're riding in a vehicle together. There's also a provision for employee testing. In the event an employee is symptomatic or is known to have been exposed to the virus, she, she or he will be referred for testing during this time of the public health emergency. And while they await test results, they should self-isolate. Employees in need of testing will contact our public health department or the provider of their choice. And in the event an employee declines to be tested, it's recommended that they self-isolate for 14 days before they return to work. And so that is the testing for the virus itself. But as you know, there's a lot of talk about testing for antibodies to determine if someone has had it in the past. And in fact, we received some feedback from employees that we're hoping the county would do that for employees as a preventive measure. But at this time, it's our understanding that the antibody testing isn't as reliable as it needs to be. And so although we don't have a recommendation for antibody testing as a preventive measure, it's certainly something that we may want to add to this later as things evolve, if that level of testing becomes more helpful. At the request of our offices, that have staff that's spent a considerable amount of time working in the field, we also have a section there where it's recommended that they contact the parties that they're going to go see when they're out in the field and ask them questions similar to the employee self-check about whether those individuals are, have symptoms or have been exposed. And, and if yes, to make arrangements to see them another time. And if no, to go ahead and proceed with the visit, but again, maintain social distancing in the home or the location they're seeing them. So the next portion of the protocol includes the self-certification form, which looks quite a bit like the one local businesses are using, the one difference. You may see primary difference at the bottom of it. We're asking departments to identify what's essentially a compliance officer in each office, a person they could call, the, the public could call, or, or another employee could call if they feel like this protocol isn't being upheld. There are some concerns about the safety in that office. And so then there are a lot of resource materials attached. In particular, some guidelines for cleaning and disinfecting facilities. This is intended to help offices instruct their janitors, for the offices that maintain their own janitors, for the offices that rely on public services. Public services is taking responsibility to make sure those janitors know how to properly clean and disinfect. And for the most part, we're going to have those janitors in the courthouse focused primarily on the common areas that the public uses. I think most offices where employees are working have expressed an interest in, in doing their own cleaning. And so what they'll do at the end of each workday, they need their trash emptied. The trash dispenser will be, the trash holder will be set outside for those janitors to dispose of. But other than that, the janitors will not be in our work areas. So, and, and then beyond that, there are a number of signs and informational materials, both in Spanish and English and in black and white, that we envision posting all over our facilities, both where the public is and where employees are. So today, we're recommending that your board approve this draft and certainly welcome any input you may have. It has been shared in advance with our labor groups and, and we would need to initiate the meet and confer process after it is finalized. We also invited our labor groups to join the meeting today. I'm not sure if anybody's in the room, but I, but I hope they are because we welcome their input as well. This is all about keeping our employees and the public as safe as we possibly can during this state of emergency. And certainly up to the time we return and begin serving the public in our offices, we'll continue to serve the public as we have been for the last couple of months through telephonic, electronic, and limited in-person means. Our recommendation is that county offices be reopened to the public by June 1st, which is the first Monday in June. There are various adaptations and preparations going on presently to enhance the safety of, of county employees and the public. For example, some of the touchless equipment that we had in the public restrooms is being restored and some is being added so, so we can keep restrooms as safe as possible. Offices are moving things around a bit to space things out, adding the floor stickers for social distancing and a lot of those things along those lines. Prior to June 1st, if you agree that that's the date we're opening to the public, there are also some soft openings going on or alternate openings that I wanted to share with you first. To name a few, first of all, our elections office has had to continue working. And that staff has, has been working all along and will continue to do so. The county clerk has expressed a need to get rolling with some marriages. There's been a backlog of that that haven't been performed. And I know Kathy Sederlin has some dates planned, starting this week, when that will happen. Our library will need to make some alternative arrangements for curb service. You may be aware that the governor's order has not allowed the opening of libraries yet. I believe it's in stage three, and Christopher Beach is here, and I think we'll share with you a bit more about that. And then the other piece of information that I wanted to share with you is I've also been in touch with the courts who we cohabitate with in the courthouse. And the court executive officer advises me that the court is also working actively on plans for bringing the public back in. But they do not anticipate doing that before June 1st. So that completes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. I just want to say thank you to all the department heads and staff as we work through this process. I know there were multiple meetings and figuring out how we're going to do this thing. So today we have the presentation and I will go ahead and ask Bruno if you'd like to make any comments at this point.
You know, after rereading through the materials, it's, there's just a lot of general hygiene common sense. But we're, we're trying to be upfront about the potential is still there, even though we feel very fortunate in the status that we're in in this county. But we want to remain being vigilant and remain being cautious for a while. And this is a good example for us to lead with. And I, I will say, and I guess what, I'm kind of bridging in on another agenda item. It kind of gives us the opportunity to have exceptions to the rules if masking is not possible. And I'd kind of like to see if we can use that language in, in local businesses. If we're allowed to use that, then I'd like for us to be able to use that in local businesses. But I'll bring that up on the next one. But I think that the way that it's written, again, it's very common sense. I appreciate the fact that we're taking those precautions by putting up the shields, by changing the stuff in the bathrooms so that it's hands-free. And so I, I, yeah, I, I think it's good and I do appreciate the work that was put on there. And then happy to see us moving towards reopening. And, and I'm glad that Carol clarified that it's not opening on June 1st, it's by June 1st, meaning that there will be some soft openings happening between now and then.
Yeah. Supervisor Brown?
So, so Carol, I appreciate all the work that went into this, but I do have some questions. And maybe Anita could best answer this and maybe Pam from HR. Because I realize, you know, we talk about PPE because we hear it on the news all the time. It's just become another one of those buzzwords that they've included in our daily lives. But sometimes these words and these, these acronyms actually have meaning and we have to really look at what they really do mean. PPE is very clearly stated on what it is in OSHA as the application that we're talking about. And I don't hear any of that in this discussion. PPE is not face masks. It's not like, like we're, you know, the, the, the sugar cube that we're giving the employees, employers that, that to make them think that this is going to solve everything. That's not appropriate face wear. It's just, you know, political correctness to, to give the impression that we care more than everybody else by making them wear it. If you're going to be OSHA compliant, you need to have N95 medical-grade masks or respirators. This is like, you know, telling, telling our road workers that you need steel-toed shoes and hard hats, but, you know, wear a baseball cap and tennis shoes is okay because at least it still covers your foot and your feet and your head. There's actually a requirement, if we don't want to get sued for workers' comp or, or some OSHA complaints, there's requirements for training, for proper, proper fitting, for attending training sessions, care for, clean and maintain PPE, periodically reviewing, updating and evaluating the effectiveness of the PPE program, which means you have to have a base. And so we have to know what to check for each time. Replace worn or damaged PPE. What I've already said about training employees in the use and care, identifying and providing appropriate PPE for employees. And that includes employees that have health risks that could be exacerbated by the, the type of face masks that we require them to wear. And then performing a hazard assessment of the workplace to identify and control physical and health hazards, which we'd have to do that with every department and every place that each employee would work. So those are the things that we have to take into consideration. And I agree with Bruno that this is on another item, but since he brought it up, we need to be very careful. We said this yesterday that we were going to require PPE. We don't want to use the word P or the acronym PPE. We want to just use face covering because that could be anything. If we require PPE, then we're making, we're mandating employees, employers in the private sector to also have this. And they would have to meet these OSHA requirements also, and they could be subject to many lawsuits if the county is requiring it and they are not providing it by the standards that OSHA has provided. So if anyone can correct me on that, I'm welcome to it. I'm open to it. But I think the research that's been given to me and the research that I've done, I think I'm correct.
Is Anita on the line? I think there's definitely a question for Anita on some of this or Pam.
Anita is trying to unmute, I think, because I saw her mute, unmute, mute, unmute. So.
Actually, I was trying to raise my hand.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. So go ahead, Anita.
That's okay. That's all right. I think that in this, in this particular case, it's really, when you talk about personal protective equipment, the masks aren't designed to protect the wearer. The masks in this case are face covering, which I agree is a more accurate term, is really from what I understand from Dr. Pace and from state public health, is really to protect others from the wearer. Sometimes people are asymptomatic. Sometimes they have light symptoms which they ignore. Sometimes they have heavy symptoms which they ignore. So this is simply to protect the wearer. So if we're trying to treat it as some kind of hazmat suit, that would not be an appropriate thing. But I don't think that's the point of the policy here. Certainly, if there's any areas that could be subject to misunderstanding, then those should be clarified. But it's my understanding the point is just simply try to give employees a safe workplace and to protect them from possible exposure from others.
Thank you very much, Anita.
Because I do, I do want to, you know, continue this conversation. And looking at the policy, the work, the worksite prevention protocol, it clearly says it's for the safety of employees. Because they will be at greater risk if some employees fail to adhere to this protocol. But we're referring to it as personal protective equipment, PPE. And OSHA's definition of PPE is more than just, you know, wearing a face mask that symbolizes safety. But, you know, there's no, there's no evidence to support that. So, you know, if, obviously, I'm not going to argue with Anita and her assessment of it, but I'm looking at the OSHA definition of it and we're clearly not meeting that or coming even close.
We can change that title if there's a better title. It's PPE is the title that you hear tossed around all over the place. But I get that it has a special meaning when it comes to OSHA or Cal OSHA. And if there's a better title, we're happy to change it. We can also.
I think, I think to avoid confusion, that would be advisable.
Sure.
Okay. Supervisor Scotty?
Yeah. And if you look later on in the attachments, I guess, at the bottom of the at the bottom of the policy, it says important information about your cloth face coverings. And later on, it does say PPE, but it says PPE is for healthcare personnel, should be used by healthcare personnel and first responders for their protection. So and I agree that if you're using true PPE in a medical field where I used to work before, you have to test to make sure that there's no leaks inside your mask. They spray saccharin on you to make sure you don't taste it. That means you're well protected and you're well fitted. This is not the situation we're in and I appreciate the argument that Supervisor Brown is coming with. But I agree with Ms. Grant that it's within the duties that we're asking somebody to do. Are we protecting them? That would be OSHA here. This is a, and I know that Supervisor Brown's going to laugh at me for saying it. This is in reaction to the emergency and to try to be as cautious as we can to protect everyone, which includes the public as well as, as our staff. So I agree that changing the wording to face cloth face coverings or facial coverings, it doesn't have to be cloth, it could be whatever, would probably be in a more appropriate use of the language so that we're not looking to do N95s on everybody's face, which is the really more uncomfortable pathway to go versus some kind of cloth face mask.
Not going to laugh at your use of the word reaction, although I would say that it probably should say overreaction.
Would it, would it work better if we're everywhere in the policy? It says, refers to PPE, it just say special supplies? Because these are not customary supplies that we have in our offices. These would be special supplies. It could say special supplies and equipment because the shields aren't a supply, they're an equipment.
Could we say COVID-19 protection equipment?
Sure.
I would like to use the language that Anita recommends rather than us to come up with something. I think, I think, you know, we have to remember that sometimes words have true meaning. And if we're not going to set ourselves up for some class action lawsuit, I think we need to be very cautious and trust our counsel to give us the exact language on that if we could.
I don't disagree.
And I'm actually okay with not doing it right this very second. I think it's worthy of giving her some chance to research it. And maybe we could come back to that particular language at some other point in the meeting. But I honestly believe that, you know, we're at a point where we're not going to be able to afford too many lawsuits, whether we're going to win them or not. And I think we need to do everything we can to protect our constituents, our employees and ourselves from even further disaster financially than we've already done.
And that is, that's part of this discussion today. You're right. Protecting ourselves and our employees the best that we can. And I know this was a document as far as the language consideration, how we want to put that together. You know, if Anita, you don't have anything now and you'd like to come back to it, we definitely can do that.
If you can give me, Mr. Chair, just a few minutes to look through this to see if it kind of suggests itself from the body of the document. I'm happy to do that. Maybe 10 minutes or so.
Okay, no problem, Anita. I think.
Thank you, sir.
So then, Mr. Chair, do you want to come back to this later or leave it entirely and come back later when she's ready?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. You know, we still have to do, obviously, besides the wording on the document and how we're going to, how we're going to name it, I think a lot of work has gone into it. I know that we do have some folks that may want to comment on the rest of the document. So I think we could do that and then fold Anita back in as the conversation is happening. So that's how we'll move forward with that issue. We know we have one. We'll come back to Anita when she's ready. So go ahead, Supervisor Scott.
My question is, how are we going to let the public know that certain departments will be opening? Because I know I've received a lot of calls about marriage license and and people that have weddings planned for the 31st. How will they be notified that they can come in and get those licenses?
Well, for the marriages specifically, I would yield to the auditor controller, county clerk. Our office is happy to support that office in preparing a press release if she would like to. I don't know if she was reaching out or just had a backlog that she was trying to catch up with. And as far as the rest of the opening, we absolutely had intended to put together a press release after we had this discussion.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any more comment on the rest of the document? Obviously, Rob, Supervisor Brown had brought up his issue as PPE and how we're going to use the language in the document. But is there any more comment on the document that was presented by staff at this point from the board? All right. If not, we're going to go ahead and kind of open it up to, I know that we do have department heads that were asked to attend today. Carol made that statement earlier. So we'll go ahead and open up the room so we can get some comment from everybody in the room at this point.
Good morning. Brian Martin here. I have a question. I'd like a little bit more clarification on what we consider nonessential travel. It says nonessential travel is considered canceled until further notice. Is that something that's going to be left to the department head discretion on what's essential? Is that going to be travel for training that is required by statute or licensure purposes? What's, I think that's pretty vague and ambiguous. I'd like a little bit more definition on what we're going to consider as being essential.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Chair.
From my view, it's absolutely the department head's call, like it was the department head's call to determine who essential workers were. And I can happily add another phrase in there that could say that all nonessential travel as determined by the department head is canceled until further notice.
That would get rid of my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Martin. Yes, Supervisor Scotty?
And just as a response to that, it's one of those that the more we're the more we're precise and detailed on what is and what is not essential travel, the more we find ourselves tripping up on the decisions we're making rather than leaving it vague where the department heads can make those decisions on their own, knowing what's needed for their staff and their services to continue the best. So I think that's the reason for the gray, but I appreciate the comment because, yeah, it needs to be determined by the department head.
Absolutely. You know, being on the ad hoc committee and hearing from, this thing has evolved from, you know, questions and conversations with our department heads. Once again, I want to thank them for the hard work and any, you know, anything that needs to be brought up, please do it today because we really want to put the power and control back in our department heads. We're not trying to micromanage. We're just trying to be as safe as possible, give them an opportunity to function the best they can for their departments, their employees and the community.
So this is Christopher Beach, the county librarian. I can give you an update on what I plan to do considering that the governor's roadmap states libraries are not permitted during phase two on the county variance page. So as your board knows, the library has been providing library service through our digital collection of books, audiobooks and videos, and assisting patrons with those via telephone from home. Since the roadmap does state libraries aren't permitted during phase two, my plan is to begin contactless curbside pickup in June instead of opening our doors to the public. Select library staff would return to the offices beforehand to train and prepare for operating this curbside pickup. Although the governor's page says libraries aren't permitted, other libraries are planning curbside service such as in Mendocino County.
Okay, thank you, Christopher.
This is Jan Koppinger. What I wanted to say, I think you probably already resolved it, but back to the PPE. About 30 of my employees have to wear the OSHA compliant PPE, the exact thing that Rob Brown had ran through. And then my office staff can handle the face coverings and the sterilization. I just don't want to do a blanket one size fits all and give anybody out in the field the indication they could put a cloth mask on their face and they will be okay. And if you can make sure you distinguish that, that all the people that are required in their position to wear the OSHA compliant PPE must continue to do so. And those that are working in office situations could just put a face mask on and do the other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Supervisor Brown, if you know.
Yeah. So when Tina asked earlier, you know, how will we let the public know? And I mean, it's, you know, we'll do a press release the same as we let them know when we were going to shut them down. So doesn't that, doesn't that seem like that's what we will do? And then I know Christopher just, you know, gave a detailed, he spoke about what they were going to be doing as far as his department. And we can also in that press release give a link to our county website where people can check individual departments too. So I don't think we're going to be able to reach out every single time a department opens. But maybe we can do that and, you know, kind of keep people open at the same time. So the press releases need to be a little more succinct though. I think the people were getting bombarded with so many press releases and they're so lengthy that I don't think people are reading them. I think they're just part of the landscape anymore. So we need to maybe come up with a different method on that.
Yeah, I think the messaging is real important, obviously, having the conversations. They know folks are watching and the word will start to get out. But if we can get this thing through today, then obviously we'll be preparing and getting the information out. I agree with the website, whether it's press releases, but folks are going to know where they want to go, but they just need to be able to get the information. Okay, any other comments?
I do have to, I want to bring one thing up. Are we going to come back to this conversation? Okay. All right. I'll. I'd like, this is another risk assessment. I'm sorry. This is another risk assessment question that I want Anita to weigh in on. And so I'll wait until, till we're ready to do that.
Well, do you think it's going to take her time to research it?
Well, yeah, I'll just bring it up right now. So this was actually brought to me by an employee and it's a very good question that, you know, we have, well, we have, you know, the workplace is largely seen as the courthouse or their office or anything like that. But for many of our employees, the workplace is wherever they end up on that call or that home visit or anything like that. So, you know, there's, there's additional risk to that where we're, we're, you know, required to evaluate the risk at the workplace. We're not able to assess the risk in home visits and all that. And the employee brought up a really good point that, you know, IHSS, which is, you know, part of our responsibility and social workers and that, they're making home visits. And they're not even allowed to go get a haircut yet. They're, we're requiring them to go in there. So either it's risky or it's not risky. I don't know exactly what to tell them, but what are we going to do about that? So that's one of the things that I want to have somebody weigh in on that.
All right. I would think obviously that would be, I don't know if Crystal's.
I will respond to that and Anita may have more to offer later after she's done gathering the information. But the language we included about visiting clients in the field was language provided to me by Crystal Markitan. And Crystal Markitan and Pam Samak and Todd Metcalf worked with me to sort of fine tune this draft and that was the language she proposed and apparently has been in operation for a while. I don't know if she's here though.
I am here. Was there a specific question that I could answer?
Yeah, the question raised were, I think, was employees in the field. And so I think home visits for social services, you know, any of the other departments, behavioral health, their home visit protocol to clients.
Okay, so just, okay, so Crystal, just real quick, that's part of it. The other part of it is we're creating a document here. We're creating a policy right now that is, the title of it, again, let me go back to that. Public health emergency return to work, worksite prevention protocol. So it's not specifically to social services or anybody else, but it's countywide. And what, you know, what we're doing, the board, you know, we're the ones that are making this policy to make sure that this is really meaningful and not just some, yeah, let's just rubber stamp it and everybody means well, so let's move on. So I don't want to put you on the spot on that, but the employee did have a question about their specific, and I don't even know if it's social services, to be honest with you. I know IHSS was one of the questions, but I don't know that employee where the employee works. But their concern was the workplace being wherever, whatever home they're visiting at that particular time.
Yes. You know, we're basically following state guidance on that. We're not winging it necessarily. And I do think that, you know, there are options for, in all programs for doing virtual visiting also, with certain exceptions for things that we are mandated to continue in person. But I have not received any concerns from staff about that specifically.
Yeah, I just want to say being part of the ad hoc committee, this is something that was put together by, you know, the department heads and staff as we work through things. You know, we're not rubber stamping anything. We're hoping that this is going to be a document that everybody weighs in on here. Department heads, the board, as far as what we're doing here in Lake County. This isn't something that we pulled, you know, from somewhere else. As far as being a rubber stamp, this farthest from it. We're working through the process and getting the input that needs to come from the folks that are going to be directing their employees from the department heads down and how we move forward with this. So Supervisor Scotty, I don't know if you have any comments. Okay, excellent. All right. So we'll go ahead and keep moving forward. Is there any other?
It's like Anita's hand is up. I don't know if that means she's ready, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, let's try. Anita, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have in front of me, and I could not hope to show you what this is.
Uh, thank you. I do have in front of me, and I could not hope to show you what this is, but there is a document that did come out and it came out entitled COVID-19 Industry Guidance Office Workspaces. And it was done through the State Department of Public Health with input from Cal OSHA, I believe. And it does state here quite clearly, which is what Supervisor Brown said, and I I spoke to briefly, that face coverings, because they don't protect the wearer, they're designed to protect others from the wearer, are are not personal protective equipment. So I think that probably what you're talking about in that beginning section is just simply, you know, use of face coverings and other disinfectant uh, equipment and just leave it at that. And that way people know that the employer is going to provide certain disinfectant and sanitizing opportunities with regard to lotions and allowing frequent use of of washing the hands. And then just some basic office protocols that deal with social distancing and all of those types of things. But face covering, to call it PPE could well confuse people. And as Jan Koppinger pointed out, there are certain workers who must wear uh, personal protective equipment, and those are subject to very strict OSHA guidelines. So it would be better not to confuse the two and to make it clear that there is also that this is to be distinguished from those types of positions which do require the use of personal protective equipment and which must adhere to OSHA guidelines.
Okay.
As far as the the home visit, that's an issue that I think is probably going to have to be addressed. I would assume that some of this is going to be a work in progress. You can't put employees into unknown situations in home visits. I had thought there was some option for remote visits, but perhaps that's going to be to be lessened. But again, you know, the the risk to people is the duration and intensity and a home visit could certainly hit both of those.
Yeah, I think we just heard from comment that there is, you know, from Crystal, that there is the obviously electronic or virtual or telephone opportunities too. So, yeah.
So, so Mr. Chair, based on the advice from counsel, I would propose we make a couple of changes to that section on PPE. And and I also just want to clarify, the guidance she referred to, we that we use that as a basis to develop this, but certainly we can fine tune this to make it more accurate. It it was included in the packet we shared with department heads when we began this discussion. But what I suggest is that we change the title of that section from Personal Protective Equipment to COVID-19 Special Supplies and Equipment. And it would say, notwithstanding those designated employee classifications that are required to wear OSHA PPE, all offices will maintain and require or maintain a supply of the following. And and then the the list of things following would be face coverings and and then the rest of it would would remain if that meets with the approval of your board.
Okay, appreciate the work, Anita and Carol. I'm trying to make sure we get this thing as close to right as possible here when we start out, so.
Yeah, in addition to that, Mr. Chair, everywhere else that says PPE, we'll change that. And as as the sheriff requested, we will adjust the section about travel to make it very make it very clear that that non-essential travel is subject to the department head's determination.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier.
I appreciate all the changes in the conversation to get more feedback, to make sure that we don't accidentally stumble into something we didn't anticipate. I know that from on the first page, we identify what PPE is, which is okay to do, but it's also confusing because PPE is used in so many different formats that it needed to be more clarified as to what specifically we were talking about and not any other idea of what PPE might be from different departments or different agencies. So I I'm gonna I I just feel I need to mention something. Yesterday, we did something similar for our businesses. We talked about the mandatory masks in business.
Yeah.
And we are looking at doing the same thing here. And and I don't disagree with it. But there's one thing that, and again, I I'm blending agenda items, but it's because it's 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 relevant to this one. I don't see where we can be fined as a county for not following this or potential imprisonment for not following this. And I'm not saying it should be on there, but I think that it has a very hypocritical tone to it by by having that separation between business and government. And I think we need to watch what direction we take because we're trying to do the right thing. We want businesses to do the right thing. Businesses want to do the right thing. And I hope that we can review what we decided on yesterday because of what we're doing today.
Well, we're talking about the workplace, worksite prevention protocol and direction. And obviously, anything can always be reconsidered. So, but ultimately, the orders that are coming out are the public health orders and that comes from the public health officer. Supervisor Brown.
Well, based on the discussion that we were able to have yesterday, we're still allowed input to the public health health officer's ultimate decision. So we need to bring that back. I totally agree with that. And I, you know, I'm not sure, I don't think Gary or Dr. Pace is his intent is to have it refined. That's never been an indication that I've ever gotten. So, you know, I I don't know that, you know, I'd like to hear what he has to say about it, but I think it's reasonable to to keep it consistent. But the other thing.
Like you guys said, we can bring anything back to the board, but really want to stick to this item here on what we're talking about right now, the public health emergency, return to work, worksite prevention protocol, direction to staff for the reopening of the county offices. I just want to make sure we're staying on topic here. You heard both your points that you guys want to have another conversation, like we brought back, but if we could work through this item, it would be great.
And I'm staying on that.
I just wanted to mention that it wasn't on here.
Bruno stayed on the item also. He he said, if we're going to be consistent, we should include it in this one and not wanting to. So I think that is, that has direct connection with this item. But the other the other thing that I want to ask that Tina asked yesterday, but didn't we didn't get a clear answer, but because I don't think there's a clear answer to be given, but we do need to have a general idea. When is the end? When does this end? We're saying back to work, but we don't say for how long and, you know, what are the conditions? What are we going to? What's the trigger for not forcing people to wear wear face masks and, you know, gloves and all that kind of stuff? What what are we hoping for here? What are we? What are we shooting for if we have a if we have any indication?
You know, like you said, that's a that's a tough answer. I asked that question of public health officers as a public health emergency. You know, so putting a deadline, I guess we could do the same thing as they're doing. I think the consideration may be reviewing it on a, you know, two to four week basis as we move through the process. So I don't think there's a clear answer. You know, we said that in the beginning, I agree with that.
This isn't the public health officer's item, so I'm not asking that of him. Maybe he has some input on it, but this is a county, this is our policy. So I'm not going to kiss this off to public health officer. This is some decision that we're going to have to have to make.
And that is not, and and that's not what I said. What I said was, we could review it. We can review it every couple of weeks through whatever the board wants to do. This is our opportunity to put in on it. Supervisor Sabatier.
So I'm looking at the COVID-19 roadmap, and I said this yesterday that in stage four is basically where masking would disappear because end of stay at home order. And so we can, and and I wish we could come up with a date, but I know that's not going to be possible to come up with a date because it's a very dynamic situation. Depending on where you are, it definitely doesn't feel so dynamic here in the county versus other counties that are really dealing with some different numbers. But if we can say this policy will end upon entering stage four or earlier if decided upon by the Board of Supervisors, something along those lines, at least it would give an expiration date, but we can't give it a specific date because there there's been no even mention of a possible date for stage four. And I know it's a point of frustration for many people, myself included. I love to have a timeline, but it it's not realistic to create a timeline for something we can't see and and don't know enough about. And I'd love to get some input from Dr. Pace on what that if stage four would be that kind of activity where everybody's going to pull back on face masks.
Supervisor Brown.
I would just like to have some language in there, whether it be the review in two weeks or something. There is nothing more permanent than a temporary government policy. And, you know, I could see this thing going on into the completely into next year. And and it might be just as unnecessary then as it is now, but I think that we need to have some kind of language in there.
What if it were to be reviewed every time the health emergency is renewed?
That that's something at least, yeah.
That's every thirty days.
Yeah, that'll work. So, Mr. Yeah, so Jake, if you could call on the hands, I can't see them. So if you could move through that process, greatly appreciated.
Yeah, so I have the one of the first hands I see here is from Michael.
Okay.
I'm trying to unmute you here, Michael.
How about that?
Yes, there we go. We hear you.
Okay, just it's a it's a great policy, obviously, a lot of work. The last four pages of the document I thought were really interesting. I was trying to find the source document. I don't know if it was CDC, CDPH, or some combination. When you talk about enforcement and, oh, we can't do this, we can do this. Really, what you need is public health education. So the last fourteen pages of this agenda item, I thought were very exciting. That that shows exactly not only how you would communicate to county employees, but I I would I would ask those particular documents to be made available separately as a separate PDF download posted on the public health website, whatever, because that really kind of shows how businesses can approach this. They could they could use those same signage in Spanish and English and help communicate not only to their employees how to deal with this, but also how to deal with the patrons coming in. So I think it's a it's a model document from start to finish. But I was particularly excited to see those last fourteen pages. And I was going to ask if those could be made available in a in a separate form somehow to the business community, the Chamber of Commerce, the cities and what have you, because I think that really it's not agendized as a public health education item. It's a workplace policy item. But but I see that last fourteen pages of this document is really kind of the core of what the county could do to help support businesses explain these policies moving forward. And there's some minor inconsistencies. If they are CDC documents, obviously, they're not going to reference exactly what our local public health orders are, but I don't see anything that's grossly wrong in them. So that was my request. Can we take a subset of this staff report, in particular, those last fourteen pages, and somehow make them more broadly available to the business community? Because I think that would be a great service. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I guess the question would be, the last fourteen pages, they're they're available through on the agenda, obviously, at this.
CDC was the source for those attachments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on that.
But we could absolutely post them where health has the other resource material for businesses. I I'm speaking for health. I assume they wouldn't object to that. Denise Pomeroy is on the line.
And it would be good to coincide with Thursday's reopening as well to maybe post those things on social media and whatnot.
Yeah. And I don't know, there are, go ahead, Denise.
Hi, yes, and I am here and we'd be happy to post those on the public health website. There is a tab there now for businesses that has a significant amount of information with the plans of social distancing, the self-certifying, and other links to both CDC and CDPH, but happy to put those on there for them.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, Jake, are there more hands up? Go ahead.
Yeah, it looks like we have one more hand up from Brian Dubrowski. I'm gonna unmute you here, Brian.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm going to bring this up because it kind of is a little awful subject, but it kind of applies. Mainly because I want to point out that yesterday, Dr. Pace did open up a can worms by saying that people with respiratory illness are not recommended to be wearing these facial coverings. And the reason I say this opens up a can of worms and the conversation is, you know, about opening ourselves up to a civil lawsuit is the fact that you know, according to the Americans with Disabilities Act, you can't tell these people they can't go to work or go into a public building because they have a respiratory illness. And from my understanding, you can't ask them for a doctor's note as he recommended. Does anybody want to say or comment on that? I mean, maybe that's a question for Anita or Dr. Pace himself. It's
You know, obviously, what we're talking about today, obviously, and let's just stick to our workplace, you know, all of the public places that the businesses are going through. I think that there's going to be debate going back and forth, obviously, on on these things. I don't know. You want to finish your comment and we'll see where the question.
Well, yeah, I did. The reason I say it applies is because the same applies to a government worker. And I mean, you're making a policy for government employees that are working in these buildings. Am I following this correct?
Yes. Supervisor Sabatier.
And I just want to, I I just want to respond that the act of being in a county facility is not the only possibility. We're still asking people to telework if they can. Some departments will have an easier time to social distance where you don't have to wear a mask if you're able to really social distance and be in your own office. For example, we can't expect people to wear a mask when they're already isolated in their own space. So I think there's a lot of options and a lot of flexibility for each department to make sure to work with whoever it is that is in their department that needs to have that flexibility. So I think that we're not saying it's a one size fits all for for everyone and everything, because every facility looks different, every department's needs are different, and some people are still going to be able to work from home. So I think that forcing somebody to fit within a box that they don't fit, I agree, that would be a problem. And that's that's what you're bringing up. But I think that for this specific policy for county employees, this is not the case. There's some flexibility in there still written in.
Throughout the document, we put flexibility.
I was just thinking that it might be a good idea to continue it as a recommendation, as opposed to a mandate. You know, I mean, that was my only suggestion.
Appreciate that. Supervisor Brown.
Well, and I I see where Bruno's coming from, but you know, after a while, you you start, you know, seeing things that go on at different departments. You know, Jan gave a really good example, just within her own department, of one group of employees needs respirators and, you know, proper stuff, while others just need a face covering. Well, you have the same thing with the jail. You don't have or or law enforcement, for that matter, you don't have the opportunity to to work from home. You don't have the opportunity to determine social distancing always or anticipate that. And you have, you know, you have the 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 very high likelihood of personal contact and even physical contact that requires, you know, more than just a face mask. and even physical contact that requires, you know, more than just a face mask or a, you know, a paper mask covering your face. And you don't have time to to slip it on, make sure it's fitted right and do all that. So, you know, we're 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 not giving consideration to all this stuff. And I know, I realize we can't cover everything, but these are the people that are the highest likelihood of coming in contact. And and, you know, somebody coming up to get a marriage license is probably not high on the on the list with somebody that's being brought into the jail, especially now when only, you know, hardcore arrests are being brought to the jail. There, that's a high likelihood and, you know, we're, you know, just just because something covering your face is not going to work. Not if our ultimate goal is really seriously protecting employees.
Mr. Chair?
Well, ultimately, you know, we worked through this with the department heads and other things. Rob, appreciate some of the comments, Jeb, coming up. That's why we had the ad hoc committee to reach out to our department heads or share all folks throughout the county, they're going to have to deal with this issue directly. And what we're attempting to do is come up with a policy that somewhat works. It'll be a living document, there will be changes that are made to it. And we've got a lot of the input in some of the concerns. And I think we've moved in the direction of suggestions of department heads as we've had the meetings. And hopefully today, like I said, we can get this protocol moving forward to to protect our employees as we open up the offices and the community. Anita, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How about where it says personal protective equipment now? It does use what Carol was suggesting, which is the COVID-19 workplace protections with a statement that all county offices will maintain a supply and where reasonable and necessary shall require the use of, then list the equipment and have either at the bottom or with an asterisk, "These protocols are not intended to and shall not replace nor supplant the PPE requirements of those certain county positions which mandate said equipment."
Okay, obviously, you know, probably take a minute to write that up, but that sounded good. I don't see, I don't think anyone on the board would disagree with that language, but everybody can go ahead and make their comments.
It gives enough wiggle room to take into account individual circumstances. And right at the point of the language being presented, it clarifies that it's not part of PPE requirements for various positions without having to name them all, but just making it clear that it's not intended to replace anything. And a lot of it may go without saying, but to a lawyer, it's often better to just say it anyway.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, Jake, do we have any other hands up in the room at this point?
Yeah, we have a couple more hands here. I have a hand up from Mark and Lucia.
Okay, thank you.
Hi again, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. So I just wanted to express that the discussion seems to still focus on whether there should be masks or no masks. The fixation seems to not be going away. Now, the argument seems to be because it's not perfect, a perfect solution, or it's not PPE, or there may be a lawsuit as a result, that somehow they should just abandon all attempts to protect the employees and the public. You know, this is a possible vector at the county building where there are going to be a lot of people coming through. Employees are going to be exposed. I see the analogy sort of to grocery stores. The stores that I want to shop at and everybody that I know would like to shop at are the ones where they seem to be protecting their employees by asking them to mask up and/or the patrons, customers are masking as well. And it just, it seems to make sense if, for instance, there were no masks at the county building and the COVID-19 were to spread to the employees. And then what? We shut down the county again as a result? I mean, that's just one consequence that's pretty obvious. So I say, you know, protect the employees, give the department heads a necessary leeway to make decisions, which I think is incorporated in this, and then move forward, protect the public, protect the employees as much as possible. It's not perfect, but it's better than nothing.
Thank you. Okay, Jake?
Yes, so it looks like we have another hand up from, is this Dorina Lucas? I'm gonna unmute, oh, you're muted, can you give me a sound check?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, that is me. I'll lower my hand, I'm just now figuring all this out. So first of all, I just want to honor you guys and say thank you. It's it's a blessing to be able to have a voice and that you guys open this up to everyone. I just had a couple of things to say. I actually did some facts on wearing masks. It actually reduces your oxygen up to 60%. It increases the risk of CO2 poisoning. It causes increased face touching when you're wearing a mask. And actually, if you touch the inside of the mask, it's even worse, you're actually inhaling that bacteria. Let's see, touching the mask more, yeah, often spreads it. It contaminates the mask and you re-inhale it. So fresh air is actually better. Also, Fauci himself did a 60 Minutes in March on how masks are, they're not really something that helps unless you have the virus and it kind of helps keep it, but I would think that that would make you worse. So I feel like just because it makes everyone else feel safe is not a good reason to put everyone else actually at harm because you could actually get sick by wearing a mask. That's just my personal opinion and some facts that I found, and thank you for sharing. Hopefully you can do a revote and we won't have to wear a mask. Also, everyone that I talked to yesterday, the lady in the bank was like, I do not want to wear a mask. How are you going to enforce? I really don't want to wear a mask, I'm just going to say I that's my personal, I don't want to get sick from wearing a mask, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jake, do we have any more comment at this point? Any more hands up?
I do not see any more hands raised.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back. Carol?
Mr. Chair, we're happy to make all of the changes. Your counsel certainly came up with a better alternative for the revisions to the section now known as PPE. If you would like, we could ask her to read that again, or if you got it the first time, that's what we'll do. And then the other changes that that we mentioned earlier today as well.
Yeah, obviously, I did not write that down word for word that Anita came up with. So I would think if you guys could work together, depending what the board wants to do as far as the issue moving forward here. Yeah, I think having it read again or worked through would be would be great. Supervisor Shabatia?
I I I know I will slightly repeat myself here, but I think it's important that we look at the written material and make sure that we are okay with it. And my worries are the slight variations between what we're asking businesses to do and what we're asking us to do. And I caution that there should be no difference.
So then maybe what we should do, supervisor, since you are a part of the ad hoc committee, maybe we should take another week to refine it.
And I and I apologize for that because, yes, I was on the ad hoc, but I also did not have what we're asking businesses to do until this weekend that just came through with the review of the new orders that were coming out. I don't feel right with separating where we can say, if reasonable, you don't have to wear a mask, but that's not what we're saying either inside our business stuff. And this is why I keep bringing up, it's, I know it's a different agenda item, but it's very relevant to how we're going to be perceived by making a rule for us to follow that is not the same rule that we're asking others to follow. And I I I'm not asking that we take away the masking. I am asking that we review it in a way that is equitable for all and not different or both.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to work with you over the next few days and bring this back in in a more final form, hopefully for your approval on the 26th.
So obviously, we'll just ask from the board's point of view, is that the, do we got a consensus to refine this a little bit more after all the conversation and bring it back on the 26th? Supervisor Scott?
So we're not delaying the opening of our offices. Is there a way we could have maybe a special meeting to be able to bring this forward so we can continue moving forward with our offices opening?
Supervisor, I think it'll work if we do it the 26th. The soft openings are happening now anyway. And the 26th still gives us plenty of lead time, I think, to be ready. The department heads know, or obviously know, we're working on it and the date we have in mind. So I think everybody would be still fully geared toward that opening.
Well, I gotta, I don't think it's Bruno's intention to change the language. I think its intention is to point out that it is different and come back and change the language to the businesses. Is that, is that what I'm reading, Bruno? Because to, otherwise we're going to make, well, let's just decide right now. Do you want to change? Do you want to have arrests and fines to county employees for not abiding by the rules? Or do you want to move on so that we can continue to open up and then bring back the other discussion and fix that? That was, you know, that screw up that they made us.
So I'll just be transparent with you. I did just email Carol Hutchinson and ask, can we do an extra item so we can rediscuss the business mandate? I don't want to rediscuss necessarily taking out the mandate for masking, but what is the repercussions for not doing so? Because I I'm, we're not going to find ourselves, but yet we're we're putting pressure on a business that's already being pressured with the language that we have. And I failed to argue it yesterday, I should have argued about it yesterday, and I'm sorry that I missed.
I get that, but we can move forward with this one now. I don't see why, we got, we got stuff to do. We got business to take care of, and kicking this thing down the road to another meeting or even a special meeting is, you know, getting old, you know, if we can take care of this stuff today, in fact, we have all day. We could be here till midnight tonight, we're getting paid the whole week. So we can be here until this thing's resolved, and I don't think we need to result, to to do anything, have a special meeting or bring it back, you know, three weeks from now. So I'd like to just get it done.
I guess the answer to your question, Supervisor Brown, is yes, I'm okay with what we have in front of us, but I'm not comfortable with the differences between what we got yesterday and what I did not argue against yesterday, which I wish I had and I failed to do so, and what we have here today. I think that we should treat everyone, whether we're government, private business, or the public, the same.
And I agree with that.
Not feel like it's equitable, and so this is why I bring it up to point.
No, I agree with that, but it's bad policy to fix one screw up by making another one. So let's fit, let's get on with this one and fix that one if that's what we're going to do. We don't need to kick it down the road. And this is a good document, I know we put a lot of energy into it, department heads are weighing in on it.
So are there other changes we should, are there other changes we should make to this based on the points the two supervisors are making?
So can I recap on the changes? One, we changed it from PPE to face covering, we retitled it to COVID-19 protection gear, or whatever the specific term is. And then we also said that if you already are in a position where you're supposed to use OSHA-compliant equipment such as N95s, that you continue doing so. This is not a, this doesn't supersede previous reasons for you to wear protective gear. And we're also saying, if reasonable, you don't have, if, when necessary, you put these on, not mandatory that you put those on. Am I correct on that recap?
That was essentially what Anita said, yes. Anita, could you reread that language you proposed?
Yes, I can, and let me just say, the reason I said we're reasonable and necessary was to avoid having to list every exception where it wouldn't be reasonable and necessary, such as health issues, or you're in office of one, or whatever is happening. So my suggestion was just to call it COVID-19 workplace protections. All county offices will maintain a supply and where reasonable and necessary shall require the use of, then list, with a caveat at the end that the protocols are not intended to and shall not replace or supplant the PPE requirements of those certain county positions which mandate said use. And you can simply say all offices shall maintain a supply and require, and then, you know, carve out your exceptions to that as you go.
Now, I like the way that it is right there because, again, if you have two people in an office that's 5,000 square feet, then what's the purpose of having to force somebody to sit at their desk so far apart with that kind of protective protective gear? So no, I like the.
Well, that's exactly what the language was intended to do when your board was talking about allowing departments to exercise some degree of control. So that's all that language was intended to do.
Right, thank you, Anita. Okay, Jake, do we have any more hands up?
Yeah, it looks like we did have another hand come up here, Johnny?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just want to say what you guys are arguing about, the verbiage. The verbiage does go a long way. I just noticed that your guys, the county page put out a copy of what Dr. Pace mentioned yesterday on how he wants to talk about mandatory masking. Well, this morning, I just woke up to Foods Basing, they're already saying that they're going to require masks starting Thursday. And a lot of people, because it's not enforced yet, am I, am I correct? You guys didn't enforce the mandatory masking. Now, a lot of people are.
And this agenda item that we're talking about right now is about reopening the offices here for the county offices.
Public offices. I'm just saying that you guys, you guys are talking about the verbiage. I'm telling you guys that the verbiage is important because you guys didn't make it mandatory yet, but the verbiage that Dr. Pace put out in his report and you guys paced it and copied on the county page now is having businesses put out that they're making you wear mandatory masks before you enter the building. So I'm just, just putting it out there that you guys should make sure you have the verbiage put correctly. If you guys do, if you guys don't want to face a lawsuit, because there's already going to be a lot of people out there. It's it's already making, I mean, like I said, I just saw Foods say they're making it mandatory, and now a lot of people are getting upset with Foods because it's not mandatory yet. And then it's causing a separation between people saying, no, yeah, it is, no, it's not. It's just going to make a big mess. So that's all I had to say was you might want to make sure the verbiage is correct.
Thank you very much.
And I will say, a private company can do whatever they want. They can choose to say mandatory before we say mandatory, that's up to them if they feel safer. Big Five has done that already here in Clear Lake since the very beginning almost. But it but it does bring up the same argument that I am making. We are a place of business of sorts. We should be following what other businesses are being told to do, and so it falls along the same line.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Shabatia. All right, any more hands up in the room at this point, Jake?
Yeah, so we had a, it looks like another hand come up from Brian Dubrowski.
Okay, we'll take one last comment and then we'll bring it back.
All right, Brian, can you give me a sound check?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so I think that verbiage is really good, actually. My only concern is the fact that if we're going to be the same as what we're expecting from businesses now, are we going to require people to produce a doctor's note to prove that their health illness is a reasonable, is reasonable to not wear a face covering? That's that's my only question, and yeah, that's it.
That is not contemplated in the policy, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much, Carol. Okay, Jake, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board. All right, board, you know, obviously, we've made some changes, obviously, we can go over those if we want to, but I'd like to bring it back to the board for some type of action today. So go ahead and see if there's a motion or if we want to move this thing, so go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Return to Work, Work Site Prevention Protocol and Direction to Staff for Reopening of County Offices to the Public with all the amendments that were listed. with all the amendments that were listed before.
All right, motion in a second. Can we go ahead and do roll call vote?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Okay, moving forward with our five point three item or nine twenty AM consideration of addition of a special board meeting, board's annual meeting calendar for twenty twenty due to the COVID nineteen health emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agendized this at your request following our discussion around the fact that you don't have a regular meeting scheduled on the twenty sixth of, of May. As you know, your board typically does not meet on Tuesdays that fall away Monday holidays. So the meeting was not scheduled for that day. But in light of all of what is going on with the crisis, my recommendation is that, that we schedule a special meeting for next Tuesday. It's hard to imagine we wouldn't have essential discussions that need to take place. However, in light of the fact that, that everyone is coming off a holiday weekend, the recommendation would be to have that meeting in the afternoon, starting at one PM if, if your board agrees and to limit agenda items to COVID nineteen and/or other matters that are, excuse me, that are truly urgent and, and have to be considered that day. Sorry about that. Still timing.
That's all right. That's okay. Yeah, so obviously, you know, proposing a meeting on the twenty sixth. Go ahead and like to hear from the board. At least one thumbs up from supervisor Sabatier. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Bruno.
I was just gonna say, if, if we don't have a meeting, it's, it's, then we might as well stop everything that we're doing. We need to keep track of what we're doing. It's still, it's, things are still happening to take a week off is, is to, in my mind ludicrous. And I'm glad that we're adding that in because we need to, the conversation should not stop for two weeks.
Absolutely. Supervisor Brown? Well, if we're doing a special meeting anyway, what's the, what would be the harm in having it on Friday instead? We could, we could then get an update on if we're able to open or not. We'll have the, we'll have, we should have an answer back by the state, although I don't know if that plan's even been set off yet. I know it hadn't been as of yesterday, maybe today. And, you know, we can address some of the concerns, some of the other issues that Bruno brought up on that other item at the same time. So, you know, maybe we could do it even earlier than Tuesday or the twenty sixth. Okay, supervisor Scott?
I think it's a good idea to keep the meeting on Tuesday at one o'clock. The three day weekend, so much can happen. And I think we need to be here on, on the Tuesday.
Thank you very much. I don't know if you weigh in on the, the date or the, the date, Bruno?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think, I think Tuesday is fine. I don't think we need to have it on Friday. I think that just looking at how things are going after they started, because I don't think our meeting is going to change the, the trajectory of what the reopening is going to look like. But for us to review how things went, if we need to review some of the policies that we've made, things like that. I think that Tuesday still works.
Okay.
Don't worry, Rob, we might still have Friday.
So the majority at this point move forward to twenty sixth. Go ahead and any more comment from the board? If not, we'll open it up to public comment. Jake, can you open up the room?
I'll open up the room. The floor is unneeded. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Somebody's out moving around.
For better or worse, the floor is open.
Okay, here none Jake. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the addition of special meeting to the board's annual meeting calendar for twenty twenty due to the COVID nineteen health emergency.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Can we do roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Yes, supervisor.
Mr. Chair, I know there's an actual term for this. It's not point of order, it's point of something. And I'm sure Ms. Grant can let me know. I would like to request an extra item for us to discuss before the meeting is over today. The, the business, in, the enforcement of the mandatory masking for businesses and, and the policy that we went over yesterday. I'd like to rediscuss that today so that we can look at having those changes if changes are made before reopening rather than after reopening.
Anita, go ahead. I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously to put this on for an extra, we'll have to qualify as one, which is, you know, is it something that came up since the posting of the agenda? It has to be taken up before the next agenda.
And, and my, thank you very much for that. And my reason for that is the policy came up over the weekend, which was after the agenda was posted already on Friday. We didn't, and the opening is on Thursday and I'd like to make sure that we ensure that the opening is exactly what we want it to be, rather than having a policy that I still have some discomforts with.
So that's a motion?
Yes, that was a motion. And I was asking, I was asking the chair, it as an extra item.
Yeah, I, well, we have to vote on it. Well, it needs to make, it has to be voted on by the board.
So that was a motion.
I would second that with, with just a statement. You're saying that we're opening on Thursday, but it's my understanding we're not opening until this is approved by the state. And so we're anticipating that.
It is my understanding that the fact that we're already on the list, we are approved, we just needed to submit our numbers. But yes, hopefully the state will respond.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. Go ahead, Anita.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just for clarification. So what you're reopening is your board's letter of support for the plan? Because that's the part that has board action associated with it.
I, I wanted this, I wanted to discuss the policy and see what's possible to be changed.
But that's not our policy and it's already submitted.
We'll have that discussion after the motions passed or, or whatever.
Right. The motion just has to clarify what's the point of the extra.
I would like to discuss along with Dr. Pace, because obviously this is a policy that he put into place. But I would like to provide input to see what's possible for him to look at reviewing to change in his policy that he's created, not to change our letter of support, but just to be a part of the discussion and provide input through the board.
That's very clear. Thank you.
Still a second, Rob?
Yep.
Okay. All right, there's been a motion in a second.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Okay.
And whenever, Mr. Chair, works for you.
Yeah. We've got a couple of things going on here right now as far as this goes with the board meeting. We've got some folks in the room that are here for a public hearing that has been put off for, for a while. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and address that public hearing at this point. Have the initial conversation and then after we address that, hopefully, go ahead, Anita.
Mr. Chair, I think you may want to speak to Director De Leon because there was, okay, just wanted to make sure you've been informed, sir.
Yep, I have. And so I know we do have Mr. Ross on the phone, but go ahead, Scott.
Good morning. So this is regards to the nine thirty item, the public hearing for an appeal to a minor use permit that was issued by Community Development and, and the Planning Commission. As your board is aware, this project has had a number of issues, as evidenced, of course, by the appeal that's been filed for and the multiple continuations that we've had of that appeal to bring to your board. This morning I was poised to recommend to your board that the project be returned to the Planning Commission for further environmental review. However, this morning, just before your meeting began, we received a notification from the applicant who had received the permit that they intend to rescind their permit that was issued by the Planning Commission. We've asked for them to submit that in an actual written form, although we do have it in email. And we will be working with county council to eventually rescind that permit. So the applicant said there's really no need to move forward. They didn't intend, is my understanding, didn't intend to participate in the appeal. And so our action is going to be to rescind the, the permit.
Scott, thank you very much for that update. I do know that we do have, if you could just, yeah, if you could just hold on for a second here, Andre. I just wanted, just to make sure that, you know, obviously we get everything in proper. Okay, all right. So you're already, go ahead, Andre.
This is my first hearing with the Zoom technology. Please excuse us if we accidentally mute. I'm appearing with Brenda Frey, who is seated to my left. She is the appellant. Mr. De Leon did provide us notice of this last minute change and we would welcome the board's action to terminate this application process. We've submitted documentation to the board. We've made a record. I believe termination of the process is, is essentially the equivalent of what Ms. Frey has attempted since last May to accomplish. And we welcome this.
Thank you both for, for attending. And yes, this is our first attempt to at a public hearing like this or an appeal. So Anita, is, can you comment on the next step of the process here? This is a little different than anything we dealt with at this point, what the action is needed.
I think that given the circumstances where Mr. De Leon has a written statement by the applicant that he intends to withdraw his permit, I think that your board can simply direct staff to rescind the permit based upon that statement. And if there should be, I think though that you may want to keep the appeal live just in case there's, there's some kerfluffle along the way. That way the appellate won't lose any, any ground. But I think that you can direct the rescission of the permit now on the basis of that statement. And just keep it, keep the appeal live pending the finalization of that rescission by Community Development.
Okay, and that would be by motion form at this point?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. I would do it by motion.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ross?
I would suggest, I agree with Ms. Grant, a date on a Tuesday in June, preferably later in the month would be an appropriate next date. I am informed that the Homeowners Association has their annual meeting on June sixth. I think if the date is chosen the last week of June, there will be ample time to confirm and close this file and inform the HOA members of this result as well.
Okay, thank you.
I would be willing to appear at that Tuesday for the conclusion of this matter.
Thank you for that, thank you for that timing with the Homeowners Association. So.
And in that case, Mr. Chair, you'll just simply continue the, you'll direct the rescission of the permit, but continue the appeal hearing to a particular Tuesday toward the latter part in June at a time certain. To, to ensure that, that there were no issues.
Mr. Chair? Supervisor Brown? I don't have, I'm, I'm having a little trouble with my computer here at the office. What is the address of this, of this appeal? Good question. Hoffaker. Okay, never mind. It just, it just came up and I have to recuse myself. I, I don't have a direct connection with this property, but I am certainly involved with somebody who does. So I'm, have to recuse myself from this. Okay. All right, supervisor Brown has recused themselves. So we'll go ahead and bring this back. Yeah, we'll go and bring it back to the board for action.
To continue with the rescinding and to bring this back, the appeal at a later time in June. Do we need a motion or is that just direction that you can provide as a chair?
Motion. We need, we need a motion.
I would, I would, the motion should just simply be to direct staff to proceed with the, the rescission of the, the permit for Mr. Santner in this matter and to continue the appeal hearing to a date and time certain toward the latter part of June to ensure that that action has occurred.
Your life saving and Ms. Grant, so moved.
And so, yeah, so moved. And so the dates are the, the twenty third.
June twenty second, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, June twenty third?
June twenty third, will that work? Does that have to come back?
Yes, that date works for scheduling wise. That date works for me scheduling wise. I would suggest that your motion include seven oh seven Organics Inc. as the corporate applicant in this matter and Mr. Oram, the property owner, as well as the collective applicant.
Well, I know supervisor.
You can proceed with how it's listed. As long as it's identified, you're fine.
It, it's in the appeal that we're talking about right now in the item. So.
Yes. I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Go ahead and call for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I, just give me a moment to get supervisor Brown back in the room.
Okay, Scott, thank you very much, Scott, for your diligent work on this. Thank you, Mr. Ross and Ms. Frey for showing up today.
Yes.
Appreciate you being patient.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Frey, for your patience and, and Mr. Ross for your indulgence of, of our continuations. And we, we, we're gonna, we're working hard to try to minimize these types of things. And appreciate your board and the action you took today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Thank you, Mrs. Frey. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're good? Yes, we're good. So we'll go ahead and, you know, I think right now we'll just go right to the item that we just added as an extra. Well, I'll move back up to, I guess, yeah, it is, is the item. So this is an extra item. This will be four, item four point one, I guess, how we make it on the agenda. So go ahead and, so go ahead, supervisor Sabatier.
So again, I failed to make some arguments that I should have made. When I read through the policy that businesses were going to sign off on at one part, and I started to go down and then I just didn't, didn't continue. So I just messed up yesterday. But it says here, I understand that my failure to comply with the terms and conditions of appendix A is and shall be deemed to be a direct and willful violation of state and local public health orders and may result in the closure of my business during the length of the COVID nineteen emergency by the county health officer and may be subject to criminal and civil penalties. And I get it that it's ridiculous what I'm asking for, that we have an order, but that I, that we almost eliminate the consequences for not following the order. But the idea of closing businesses upon reopening and the idea of criminal action, and I know that it'll, and I'm not speaking for sheriff and I'm not speaking for our chiefs, but the idea of putting out a, 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 a criminal action against a business owner just doesn't sit right for me. I, I, I feel that yes, it's a symbolic gesture to say it's an order versus highly recommended. And I think that helps to push people to go where, where we want them to go. But the idea of saying that there can be criminal repercussions when we're not going to have any criminal repercussions if, if we don't follow those orders ourselves. And I've gotten some emails about dealing with some of our staff and that they didn't have any masking on. And I, I'm sure you as well have gotten some of those emails as well. And I'm sure you as well have gotten some of those emails as well. And I would just like for us to treat the public as well as we are trying to treat our staff and our public facilities that we just discussed. And so that, that's one of the things that I would like to see changed. The fines, I think, should still remain, because if you're blatantly just disregarding the whole thing, there needs to be some sort of teeth, and I don't want to get rid of all the teeth. But the criminal citation, it just seems to me like that's just, it sounds absurd. And from a business perspective, we've asked you to sit still and watch your, your finances drain. And, and we can talk about whether that was for right reasons or not. That's, that's, that's not a different discussion, as far as I'm concerned. But now that we're letting you go back in, we're also kind of threatening you with, we can go after you for a criminal citation. And I just think that that's a little too large and looming versus what we should be doing, which is helping you get back into business. And I know that's what we're trying to do, but it just, it being in the language, it bothers me. It doesn't sit well. And then the other part, and I know this was a discussion that, that there's a lot of exceptions. If you're under the age of six, you don't have to wear a mask. If you, if you have some sort of disability or some sort of ailment that makes it hard for you to put it on or for you to have a mask on, then you have, there's an exception. And, and the fact that we're asking for a doctor's note, I think that goes too far, too. I think we need to just put out the order, try to hold our, our, our businesses accountable by saying, hey, are you at least trying to make people do this? Okay, well, here's how you can do better. And I know that's what we intend to do, but if we get rid of the criminal part and the doctor's note, because I, 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 I just, I, I, I feel like that, that is a little too far. And I don't even know how we can even, how, how are we going to work through that process? It's more work than is needed, and we just need to say, hey, it's an order. We want you to do this. It's mandatory. I don't know. I, I, I'm uncomfortable with it, and we're not doing it for us either. We don't have to bring a doctor's note to say why our employees would not be able to wear a mask, because we are trusting our employees that that would be the case, that they don't have to wear a mask. And I think that we have to at least start there, rather than start with the really stomping our foot on the ground and saying, no further. And I, and I think that right now, with the general feeling of the public, and, and myself included, where we've, we, we've stopped normal life for good reasons, we have to be able to trust people to get back up and, and working and doing it right. And, and some of those things tell me that we're not trusting. So I'll leave it at that. And, and I definitely want Dr. Pace to be a part of this conversation. This is not just me having a soapbox time. I want to be able to go back and forth and see how, how it's possible to possibly change.
Thank you. I see that Anita Grant has her hand up at this point, and then I'll come right back to you, Tina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to point out that the next item, 5.5, is actually discussing that. Part of what the item is, is going to be addressing is the use of county staff to assist local businesses in compliance, with the whole focus of the county being to ensure compliance, to get them the right information, resources, et cetera, rather than harsh penalties.
And, and I appreciate that, and I think that we should help them with the guidelines being potentially massaged out a little bit, because right now, the guidelines as they are, there's still, what I feel, is a sort of threat, which I think is unnecessary.
And it's through an urgency ordinance that your board can actually speak to that with, with your own powers, your police powers.
Okay. All right, supervisor Scott.
No, I agree with nothing that Supervisor Sabatia is saying. We need to be helping our businesses, and I don't believe we can legally ask for a doctor's note. My question would be, is this going to delay our opening? Because we've already submitted our letter to the state, and I think we, we need to look at this a different way to make sure that we're not stopping our, our opening this Thursday.
Yeah, that's, they should go, I see Anita's right hand back up. I think it's another, go ahead, Anita. Oh, she took it down.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, there you go.
She found the hand, now she's abusing it.
Yeah.
I was just waving at you. That was.
All right, and I saw it that time. I'm like, all right, she's waving again. Okay. I guess, go ahead, Dr. Pace.
Hi, Gary Pace. Yeah, so we did submit the, the application last night. I guess, so from my point of view, what we're trying to do is to protect the vulnerable people in the community. And we're not trying to shut businesses down. We're not trying to find businesses. We're not trying to prevent businesses from opening. The whole point of this is to get things moving along in the safest way possible. So the more protections we can take, the, the more we can move things along, in my perspective. So the, you know, we ask people to get a doctor's note when they have a assistance dog. We ask people to get a doctor's note to get a DMV, you know, a disabled placard. And so this is all just part of keeping people safe. And basically, what the intention of this is to take the onus off of the, the store owner to have to make that determination. If they come up to somebody and they say, you know, to come in here, you really need to wear a mask, and they say, hey, man, I've got asthma. And so then, all of a sudden, the store owner's in this uncomfortable position of having to make some kind of determination on the fly there, or just say, okay, cool. But then other people are looking around, and it's like, well, how come that person? And then, you know, so it was trying to make it more of a, of like we do with other medical situations, like the couple I mentioned. And so, yeah, and then the whole other discussion we're going to have is about enforcement. I mean, there's, yeah, I'm not, that, that terminology, I think, was just part of how it got framed. There, there's no interest in closing businesses, preventing them from opening, rescinding licenses, anything like that. The whole, you know, we were going to have a whole agenda item about how you all wanted us to move forward with the compliance and kind of helping ensure compliance. But I guess we'll talk about that later. But that was, but anyhow, the thing is applied, the thing is submitted. I, presumably, we can change it, whatever, you know, whatever we need to do. The point is that this is not government overreach or impinging on people's rights. That's not any of the intention at all. It's to protect people and protect the people that are the most vulnerable. And so it's a little bit disconcerting, because I think there's a lot of misinformation out about masks. There seems to be a lot of information on the internet that is not really science-based, in my opinion. And I'm not sure how this face masking issue has kind of taken the forefront, because really, what we're trying to do is to, you know, we've got a new case yesterday now. We're, we're trying to slow down the spread of this thing so that we don't get into problems. And this is really about health for, for especially the vulnerable people, and, and getting the businesses open, and to try to do it in a safe way. So I'm a little bit confused about how to address this in a kind of a way that really gets to the core of what the concerns are.
One second, Bruno, I see Anita has her hand up. Anita, go ahead. And maybe that's, maybe she didn't mean to.
I was just, I'm sorry. I, I wasn't waving. I was just going to say that when Dr. Pace was referring to how best to get compliance, that is the next item again on the agenda for discussion. It hasn't taken the form of anything as a formal order from your board yet, because obviously, your board's interest in how you'd want to move forward with that will have to be discussed when you take the item up.
Okay. So with hearing that, Bruno, what are you looking to get done here right now? You're talking directly about the enforcement part, which, as Anita has pointed out, is, we're going to discuss in the next item here again. So how do we want to proceed on this one?
Well, I, I, I understand that there's a fine line between what we're discussing now and the actual enforcement. But if the policy says potential criminal citation, that's the, that, that's the guideline within that I, that I feel, and especially if we're not going to do it, then it doesn't belong there. The, the, the doctor's note, to me, it just seems like a, a very, I, I've already postponed two doctor's appointments, because I don't feel that it's essential for me to go see a doctor. Now we're going to go see a doctor for getting a doctor's note, so you can go to the store. I don't know. It just, it, it seems to have a lot more hurdles in there than necessary. And I think that with the numbers that we've shown so far, that means that people are taking precautions. Some aren't. It's not, it's, it's maybe around 50/50, depending on where you go. Some stores have decided to go full-on cautious. Some stores have not. I don't feel comfortable that we have a difference in policy of how we're going to deal with protection versus how businesses are going to deal with protection. The enforcement of it, we're going to enforce our own for our own staff, but then we're going to be enforcing it on others. That's a different conversation. But the policy itself being different is what I'm concerned about, because there is, I, I appreciate the role of government, but we also need to recognize that government sometimes ends up putting themselves in a position where they seem to act where they're outside of the normal resident area, where they can go travel, they can go get haircuts, they can go do the things that we're being, that the normal general public is being told you can't do. And we have to not do that. We have to be in line with what we're asking people to do. And I see a difference in the policy, and so I'm speaking directly only about the policy. And I agree with Dr. Pace. The amount of information we talked about for masks is ridiculous. Healthcare workers wear masks not to get sick, but to protect others and themselves. So I mean, it's just the misinformation on masks is there, but I'm speaking of the policy. I'm not trying to stop us from wearing masks. I'm trying to make the policy be correct for what we're asking the public and what we're asking ourselves.
Supervisor Brown.
So I, I'd like to just get to the point, if Bruno could just make a recommendation, I'm for ditching it, too. I, I do want to disagree. Cops don't ask for proof, a doctor's proof for, for placards. That's something the DMV asks for, and I, I had experience with that, and they, they don't. You know, they can't ask for it, and, and so they don't. So, but if Bruno wants to make a recommendation, let's just get down to it and get the public input and move on.
Yeah. Okay, any more comments from the board? Go ahead, Tina.
I guess my only comment again would be, can we maybe come back to this next week after the state approves this? And then come back and see if we can submit something different instead of, I would just hate to slow down the state from approving our variance.
You know, I, I guess I would need clarification from Anita if this vote would. As far as the enforcement, I, I know what we're saying is the masking, other things like that, as far as the enforcement issue. I just would appreciate Anita, if there would be any clarification on if this would slow down our letter of support of what we've attested to the state of California.
I think that, I think that there's, and I don't know if your board wants to draw it, but there's a distinction between the, the ramifications that are available and the ones that your board wants to move forward with in the best interest of the public. And you can do that, again, in the next item, we'll be talking about the potential of an urgency ordinance that describes how your board envisions enforcement. You, you know, the plan, the variance plan is that of the public health officer, and it's been submitted. Your letter of support has gone with it, and I understood you didn't want to change that. Your board, however, can address some of this through an ordinance, and it's possible. I'd have to check this with Dr. Pace and the state, but it's possible to perhaps do an addendum of your board's urgency ordinance next week, if you decide to do one, as to how you want enforcement to move forward. But again, it's, it's already been submitted and done. If you try to pull it back, if you're in a place in a line, potentially, you could lose that place. I, I don't know. I'm imagining that a great number of smaller jurisdictions that have the statistics that make them eligible are going to be filing these right now, particularly before a holiday weekend.
Okay. All right, yeah, you know, and I would agree with Tina. We don't want to slow anything down here. If we can address the issues that you're bringing up with the urgency ordinance, I think it could be something that we should consider. But ultimately, that's up to the, the rest of the board. Go ahead, Dr. Pace.
Hi, thanks. You know, I think, I, the plan is in. I wouldn't recommend that we don't change that. I think we're, Bruno, if I'm getting this right, that, that, that language that you're referring to is in the documents that the business have to sign to, to basically self-certify, correct?
Exactly.
Right, so we can change that independent of the proposal. So, I mean, you know, that was stuff we're working with. We're, we're bringing in information from a lot of different places, and we can, we can adjust that. That, that sounds harsher than we have any intention of enforcing. So that's not, I, I don't, I don't think that's, that's a minor issue that we can easily solve without, without interfering with the application, in my mind.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pace, for that clarification. Supervisor Sabatia.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, too. Dr. Pace, I, I'm, I'm not trying to change the basic concept of what our intentions are. I'm just trying to change what we're asking businesses to sign, because it feels like it, it's not what we're signing on to with our own policy. And so I, I agree, and I appreciate you making that comment and statement, that it's not something that was necessarily submitted for the state to review. That's our application that businesses will sign with us. So I, I would like, I would like to offer that we change and get rid of criminal citations. Let me read specifically where that is. On the application submitted titled Local Retailer Business Owner Self-Certification Form, on number five, I would like to, to eliminate the last sentence portion that says, may also subject me to criminal. I would like to get rid of criminal and keep civil penalties. That way, if we have somebody, then we can talk about the enforcement of what that would look like in our later part. But criminal, I, I want to get rid of. To me, that's not criminal, and we should not be doing that. And I'd also like to suggest that, that we, at this moment, start off with the the trust of the public, which they've done a good job of doing exactly what we've asked them to do, which I believe we all agree that our numbers show because of our actions that there, that we've done well, that we get rid of the doctor's note at this moment in time until further notice.
Think you're talking about two different issues there. The criminal stuff, I think, you know, as far as we move forward, Dr. Pace has said that they're willing to remove that. So I don't know if we're going to attempt to make a motion on that, but a consensus seems like with the agreement to remove that is probably sufficient, but we can go from there.
And, Mr. Chair, your next agenda item really was intended to have a dialogue with you about that. So perhaps you want to do this and not have that dialogue? I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's, that, and I, and I agree with that, as far as the enforcement goes. All right, any more comment from the board? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to the room. Let's see, we have some hands up.
All right.
Supervisor Brown, did you want to say something?
Well, I just, you know, I, I appreciate where Bruno's going with this, but I, I don't. We, you want to trust them. I don't remember the exact term, but we want to trust our business owners, yet we don't trust them enough to where we don't feel like we need to be babysitting them. So I, I think we get rid of the penalty civil, we're not going to enforce any of it. It's silly to think we are. And I appreciate that, you know, some board members are now concerned about, uh, delaying reopening. But, uh, I think we just ditched the, ditched the, uh, pretend enforcement, uh, issue and just be on, be done with it. Just get on with it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, open it up to the room. Jake, if you could open it up and see we have some hands up in the room.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, first hand that I have up here is from Michael.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Hear me? Yeah. Michael Green. So to Supervisor Sabatier's concerns, I think he's looking at the self-cert form, in particular, the signature page for business owners, that fifth bullet point. And, and that whole thing, that whole, that whole signature page did read a little bit legalistic. And, and if they just strict the fifth bullet point, that would be fine. But even if you strike it, you haven't stricken the underlying ordinance. And it sounds like you're trying to have a broader discussion. Well, we're not going to enforce any of it, so we shouldn't have any of this. So to the narrow point of the self-cert form, I agree, it does read too legalistic. I agree, the whole fifth bullet point could probably get taken off and nobody would do that. To the broader issue of enforcement, you guys are, you're really getting dangerously close to shooting yourselves in the foot here. The more you say we're not going to enforce this, uh, the more, the more silly we look coming up with a really coherent policy for the workplace and the county buildings, trying to communicate similar policies to our private business owners. Yeah, you aren't going to go out and cuff people, you know, willy nilly, and the sheriff's already stated that. But you are going to enforce this. You know, you're going to enforce this with the, uh, uh, you know, uh, the moral weight of the office, uh, of the county. You are going to establish these public health orders. They do have enforcement power up to and including those criminal penalties. You, you're not going to pass an urgency ordinance that would strip those abilities out of enforcement of the public health order. And if you do, put that on the agenda as such, you know, let's have a discussion about that. So I agree, we want to make it easy for businesses to self-certify. We shouldn't have them signing under penalty of perjury, a bunch of stuff that they may or may not agree with. But we don't want to soften the enforcement. We, we want to recognize that public health education is the overall goal of how we're going to enforce this. You know, we're going to try to get people to comply voluntarily. But you also need to communicate that for those rare people who just absolutely want to go guns blazing into Walmart without a mask. We want to reassure the public and we want to reassure the businesses that in a worst case scenario, the county has maintained all its enforcement options up to and including criminal enforcement and civil. So I agree with Supervisor Sabatier that the self-cert form needs some improvement and some softening. But I don't agree that enforcement in general should be softened. Uh, I think we've, uh, unfortunately engaged in some very mixed messaging. And I think, I think that's probably a whole separate agenda item. You know, what are you willing to enforce and how are you going to enforce? But, but with anything involving a public health order, you know, obviously criminal penalties are the very, very, very last resort. But because it's the last resort, that does not mean you go around saying.
Next three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can you wrap it up, Mike?
The narrow point of, of changing the self-cert form. If you want to have a broader discussion about, we're just not going to enforce any of this and it's stupid. I would strongly urge caution on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Jake, is the next comment?
I would like to respond to that. So, so once again, Mr. Green has misrepresented my statement. I didn't say we weren't going to enforce it. I said it's unenforceable. There's a big difference. Although we're not going to enforce it because it's unenforceable. And, you know, to pretend that it is, that's the, that's probably the stupid part, to use his words. It's, it's just, you know, you're talking about, you know, Walmart and all this other stuff. That's their business. If they want to require masks and not let people in without them, that's their business. We're not going to enforce it because it is not enforceable. There's a big difference there. So don't get confused with that.
Okay, go ahead to the next speaker, please.
All right. The next name I have on the list here is John D. Mix.
All right, John, everyone.
Good morning. Morning.
I, I am a county employee. I'm currently at special districts. Um, appreciate all the hard work that everybody's doing. My, my, um, my concerns or my, my comments are a few things. I, my understanding is we're at about, are we 11 or a dozen cases now in the county?
Eleven.
Eleven cases. Okay. So, um, some of us are aware that 11 cases out of 65,000 in the county is a very small number, even though, yeah, we added a new case tonight and every new case is, you know, is worth, is worthy of looking at. So, um, I am a veteran and some of the things that I look at are from a county perspective as an county employee, as a county representative, is, you know, what are our, um, you know, what are our limitations as, as governors? What, what is our purpose? We are public servants first. And so I, I'm in agreement with Supervisor Sabatier that, um, the softening of the language is important. I actually, I believe the language of mandatory and compliance and these kind of words are, have kind of run their course this far into the, into, into this, um, you know, epidemic. As, as it stands, uh, I believe that language that includes, um, partnering, helping, assisting should be, um, at the forefront. And the word trust really is, um, is a good word. Really what it implies is, um, the standard of innocent until proven guilty. And that, um, that we should be trusting of our people, that they're going to want to do the best they can to protect their environments to the best of their ability. And that's what we should be encouraging. And again, leaving it in their hands of private citizens to make private choices for their private businesses. So that's just from a government perspective and looking at some of the numbers and some of those things. I did, in fact, I was case number three in Lake County, uh, myself. And, uh, so I've experienced it and for me it was, it was less than a mild flu. I just turned 50. So, um, again, um, the severity, uh, versus, and the impact versus what we're talking about. And number, uh, three for me is looking at the county as a whole. We are isolated. We can expect that not many people will find their way up here, but as many as would. You know, we can mitigate those kinds of, you know, things by keeping that language out there and keeping the, you know, the forefront of awareness and education. But again, the word mandatory and compulsory and these kinds of things, criminal, I just don't think they're going to fly at this stage. This county, other areas like other cities, they have an economic engine. They, they can fire it right up. Businesses, restaurants, barber shops, whatever you name it, insurance companies. People are going to flood back into those businesses in the cities. Up here, it's harder to draw people into the restaurants and into the, into the various businesses. And so our economic engine is going to be slower to fire up. I think we need to keep at the forefront of allowing people to, again, to begin to, um, to do commerce, keeping it as, as a, as a, that we are partners.
Three minutes, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, the last, the last point very briefly is that we don't send the police to restaurants when they have health code violations. We send a public official. We say, um, you are, you know, you have this discrepancy or that, and they're given a time to correct it. I don't think we should be sending the police into these stores. I think we should be having a softer hand with public officials who are there to help assist, notify, you know, and, and maybe put that notice out there that says, you know, you're currently not there yet or this happened, please correct.
All right.
That's all my statement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, and I guess just a response, we are going to talk about that. The next agenda item is how to assist local businesses. So definitely working on the word smithing as we move through this and understand the power of those words. So, um, thank you for those comments and we'll go ahead and go to the next one. Uh, Jake?
Uh, yes, the next, uh, hand up I have here is from Brian Dubrowski.
Okay.
All right, Brian, can you give me a sound check, please?
Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So, uh, thanks a lot, Bruno, because I had a whole page of everything written down that I was going to say, but you addressed it all. The only thing I could add is I think that I agree with Rob Brown and his recommendation as far as, you know, getting, getting away with the, uh, whole, uh, enforcement part of that signature card that you guys are going to have businesses sign. As far as the enforcement, don't you think the law enforcement's job of arresting and rearresting criminals that just get right back on the street from having a zero dollar bail is hard enough? I mean, just something to think about, food for thought, and that's all I got. Way to go, Bruno. Way to go, Rob Brown.
Anita, I see your hand is back up. Okay, I see it's gone now. All right, Jake, I don't see any other hands up in the room. So we'll go ahead and bring it back to, uh, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier.
Uh, I appreciate the comments made by Michael Green. And I, I would like to add that, that can, let, let's, let's look at striking the entirety of item number five on that, uh, signature form.
And I think earlier in the conversation, we had this with Dr. Pace. I thought that was something that was going to work on Dr. Pace, you could clarify that, but sounded like.
Earlier it was just about the criminal and I'm just looking to see if we could just strike the entire number five out.
Second.
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that. I don't, you know, I think it would really help to have the other discussion about how, you know, that's really what the question here is. And, um, we're kind of, um, not, not at the right place yet to where it gives us guidance.
So Bruno, in this conversation and discussion, can we move on to the next item and finalize it there?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you very much for bringing this. Appreciate the conversation or, or for allowing for the extra item. I appreciate the conversation and, uh, I, I feel a little bit more comfortable with, uh, what this is going to read like when a business owner is going to be signing this off.
Okay. I'm going to request, pick a, uh,
He's withdrawing the motion because there was a motion in the second.
Yes.
Well, the, the, the thing is we can, we can provide consensus, but the motion doesn't necessarily change the fact that this is a, uh, specific order and, and draft created by public health officer without the need of approval from the board of supervisors. It sounds to me like, uh, Dr. Pace is, uh, willing to review it and has heard our input. And, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to see the changes that we are, uh, looking to see. Because it seemed like it, uh, it seemed like it was logical for Dr. Pace, um, from his perspective.
So I guess, so I guess directly the question which Supervisor Brown is asking is, are you withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, there's no need for a motion since this is not under our, uh, control. I needed to have this discussion with Dr. Pace and the board to see about making those changes.
So that's, yes, you're withdrawing the motion, just yes, you're withdrawing the motion.
But it is under our control. We voted on it yesterday, so.
Or the letter that we supported.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go ahead. Uh, we could take a, uh, five minute break and then we'll come back and we'll start with the next item.
Come back at 11:30?
Yes, 11:30. Please, five minute break. Uh, pretty quickly here, let's take care of our, um, seven point two item. Uh, consideration of a local health emergency and order. Sorry about that. Uh, prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transportation, disposal of fire debris for the Menesino complex fire. Wait, Dr. Pace?
Hi, um, Gary Pace, Public Health Officer. And, uh, so this is the ongoing, uh, kind of extension where basically waiting for Cal OES to come out and do the cleanup on these, um, sort of remote sites from the fire a couple of years ago. And, um, they, they said they were going to come, they, they, we had contacted them about three or four weeks ago now, and they said that they had not forgotten about us. They were planning on coming in June or July. I wrote to them again and said, you know, try to get a conversation going. They did not respond yet because it's just, well, maybe this rain the last couple of days has slowed things down. But it seems like we should be able to, um, they should be able to get out to where they need to get. And it'd be nice to get it out before, get it taken care of before the next round of fires. The risk for the next round of fires comes. So I'm going to reach out to them today again and see. But the, um, the request would be to extend this order. I think we're doing it every two weeks now and, um, until they come out and, and do the cleanup that they, that they're obligated to do.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? But you're on mute. There you go.
I just want to again, uh, reiterate to Dr. Pace, uh, if he needs, uh, myself or possibly Supervisor Crandall to, uh, help him out in any of those phone calls, uh, we're here to provide the assistance.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any more discussion from the board? All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead, Jake, we'll go ahead and open it up to the room.
All right. It doesn't look like I have any hands raised, uh, so I could unmute the floor and we could.
Yeah. Yep. Go ahead and unmute it, see if we have any comment on item seven point two.
Okay. The floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, we'll close it down and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue the local health emergency or approve the continuation of local health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transportation and disposal of fire debris for the Menesino complex fire.
Second. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. There's a motion in second. We do the roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Pace. Okay, moving on, is, uh, Carol back on? Carol, are you on the line at this point?
I am back.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and take up item five point five, our nine thirty-five AM item. Consideration of possible, uh, measures to assist local businesses and members of the public to comply with local health, public health orders during the gradual reopening of the Lake County during the continuing COVID-19 public health emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agendized this after, uh, some discussions I had had with Dr. Pace and Denise Pomeroy and Anita Grant about the need for possible measures to assist local businesses and the public to comply with the public health order. And so for the purposes of this discussion, which we intended to really be exploratory with your board and get a sense of, of what you would like to see happen, um, in, in this area, is to first start with Dr. Pace, who's going to describe, um, the needs as he sees them. And then Anita Grant will follow that with what is possible for your board. So if we could start with, thank you.
Hi, um, thank you, Gary Pace, Public Health Officer here. And, um, uh, yeah, you know, a lot of the discussion that was had earlier today is really relevant to this. And we definitely hear the concerns of the board and the public about, um, not being heavy-handed and that's not the interest at all. So really, I'd like to talk about this in terms of compliance as opposed to enforcement. It's really, the idea is, um, to help businesses do, uh, open in a way that's safe and allows the public and the workers to be safe. That's a big push on the state level and it's, uh, what we want to do on the local level here. So we're in the process of opening. We want to encourage businesses to open through this sort of, kind of methodical, thoughtful way of trying to open in a way that keeps everybody safe. The main condition, the main issues of it are, we're trying to protect the staff and the public. We, uh, we want to really support the folks that are complying. So the folks that are out of compliance, you know, when you're working hard to try to do, uh, go the extra step and then you look over across the street and the other person is not, it makes you feel not very good. So we want to try to support the folks that are complying by at least addressing the people that are not complying. And we're also kind of interested in using public opinion and, and the market forces to help, help, um, encourage the right thing. So, you know, this is all about self-certification where we initially, we were like doing this application process. And very quickly, the, the blue collar commission and the, the leaders here really said, you know, that's not the right way to go. The right way to go is to, you know, allow the businesses to take responsibility for what they're doing. So we went to this self-certification model and it seems like a good one. This seems like a good way to go. And, but we do want to respond. We get a lot of complaints from the public now about places that they go where the grocery store is not, uh, the workers are not wearing masks and they're concerned and they want, they want us to go in and do something about it so that they feel safer. That we're getting a lot of these calls. And we, we've been basically having the, um, environmental health people go out and talk to them and, and sort of work with them. And most of the places, w- once they get a visitor or two, they, they quickly get into compliance. But it's, um, uh, you know, as we're expanding now and we're including more, more businesses. and we're including more, more businesses and more opportunities for this, we wanted to have the discussion with you all about exactly what we've been talking about so far this morning. How do you want us to go about it? Do, we don't really have the workforce in place right now to do it. We've been using the environmental health people, but their, their jurisdiction is really only in the, you know, restaurant and food business sort of areas. And so there's all these other businesses opening up and really local government as well. And in my mind, these would all be the same. When we start getting complaints, we'd go talk to them and see what needs to happen to help them get in, in, in agreement with it and kind of get with the program a little bit. The main pieces of this that I'm most interested in are the, to look at the plan. So the person, whoever this would be, look about and look at the plan that's posted in the self certification process and make sure that it makes sense and that, you know, say, well, this is a place where you're kind of out of compliance or you're not following what your plan is, you know, are you willing to do that? Can you do that? Are there any obstacles? There is a certificate that the, the EDC and the city councils and the Chamber of Commerce have available that they put together that, you know, if you go, goes and shows their signed plan to the, to this, uh, uh, city offices of Lakeport and Clear Lake or the Chamber of Commerce, they can get one of these signs. It's a really nice sign that they can put in the store window. So people will know that they're kind of on board with this. There is the, the face coverings, the cloth face coverings, there's been a lot of discussion about. I think the, the evidence is pretty clear from internationally and also from most of the expert health people that this does slow down transmission of, if somebody is infected, then it slows the transmission to the other people in the area. So I think there's really no doubt that it's, it's a good idea to do. There are probably some people that should, that would be an exception. I think that number is pretty low really. But, um, you know, that seems like a big point of discussion that people really want to do. It's, I'm kind of going through the list of what we'd be looking at. So the plans, do they want to put the certificate in? Are they sticking with the, the facial coverings, cloth face coverings? Is social distancing being set up in a proper way? Is the physical environment set up in the proper way? And are they sort of sticking with it? We've all been to the grocery store and seen how they put those tape six feet apart and everything. And so that's kind of one of the ways to do it. And then the last piece is the disinfection, using the disinfectant, kind of wiping down high touch areas and things like that. So that's the stuff we're really looking at. And I think the model is really like what we do with restaurants with environmental health, like one of the callers said earlier, the police, this isn't really about the police. This is about getting some compliance inspectors to go out and have a discussion with the businesses. Let them know that they're getting some complaints that we're interested in, that we're aware, you know, and that we're interested in them going along. And so the idea would be, you know, whoever this compliance inspector would be, that they would go to the place to say, you know, we've gotten some complaints, review the plan, discuss any obstacles, encourage them to, to get on board. And then if we get called back, more education, you know, there'd be a couple of steps with this. We'd like the people that would be the, the compliance inspectors to be the kind of people that are really, you know, good about forming partnerships with folks. That's what we're looking at here. It's not, we're not interested in confrontation. We're not interested in shutting anybody down. We're not interested in drawing a line in the sand. It's really, you know, trying to help encourage engagement with the community to do the right things to keep people safe. I feel pretty strongly like what we've seen, like Supervisor Sabatia and others have said that most businesses will, will work with us with this and they'll engage with us and they all want to do the right thing. And, um, you know, so the question really is, and this is, I'll stop after this, but how do we structure this? You know, code enforcement, there's a way under code enforcement that we can, the, the legal structure is in place for that. And I think Needle, Anita will come in and talk about that. But code enforcement, they don't, they're busy. So they don't really have the workers. Environmental health can do some of this. This is what they do, but their current jurisdiction is only in restaurant and food businesses. And so, you know, do, how do we get the people power to do? This is the one question. And then the other question is, uh, you know, do we need to, it's what we've been talking about all morning. Do we need to have teeth there? Or if we go out and educate, and we go out and educate, and we go out and educate, and somebody says, you know, this is nonsense. I'm not going to do it. Then what? Do we walk away and say, okay, well, you know, you're in the minority. I hope, I hope you're making the right decision. Or do we want to put some sort of teeth in that? And I don't, you know, I think that's a, a discussion to be had on a bigger level here. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm willing to have a discussion about that. I'm not, I'm not really that interested in, you know, having a big fine or anything like that. We, that's not the point here. The point is, is to get, get us all kind of on the right page together. So that's what we were hoping to do today was to get some guidance. And then, so I think the two questions really are, one is, is how can we staff it? Should we think about getting under Anita's kind of guidance around the code enforcement, get some extra workers to come in and be in that role or to bring environmental health in under that, that role? I, I'm not, you know, exactly how that would get structured. And then the other question is, what kind of teeth, if any, do we want to have? Do we want to start having fines somewhere down the road? Or do we want to just make it more of a kind of public education campaign and go from there? So those are the, that's really what we were hoping to talk about today.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Pace. What I'd like to do is be able to have the folks that had talked, they wanted to weigh in. So I know Anita and, um, you know, we're a part of this conversation. If we could just get that full conversation out there and then bring it back to the board and have our conversation and then open it to the public. I think that's the best way to go about it. Yeah, Supervisor Brown?
I would like to ask a question before we do that so that we can get our questions answered. The.
I was planning on here in the whole proposal.
The question was, how should we staff it? But I, I didn't hear anybody ask or answer the question, should we staff it? It's assumed that we're going to staff it. You know what? I'm not, I'm not so sure we need to do anything. Just, we put out, put it out there. Again, I hold that we should, it should be a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much, Supervisor Brown. Anita, would you like to comment or?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, the, I believe that this is just being presented to see if your board wanted to take an active role in education, assistance with compliance. Generally, when it comes to, you know, you've got the state's orders coming out and sometimes people have difficulty in understanding exactly what compliance looks like in a given situation. And so what has been talked about was just simply offering some kind of assistance in that regard. And your board could certainly determine that there was a need for that. And as you know, health orders are, can be enforced through the sheriff or peace officer, but there's also an opportunity for public officers to go out and assist in compliance. Again, not leveling penalties, but to assist with compliance. And the law under the Health and Safety Code finds that there is a unique skillset of code enforcement officers as public officers to assist with making efforts toward compliance. So your board could, if you wanted to, and certainly you don't have to, you need not do anything at all. Your board could recognize that you want to achieve enforcement as a, or compliance as a county rather through compliance assistance and education and direction toward resources, et cetera. You don't have to do that with an ordinance. You can just suggest that any county staff could, could assist with that. But if you wanted something a bit more formal so business community knows that your board is attempting to, to make resources available to assist toward compliance, that your goal is to achieve compliance rather than a more heavy handed enforcement approach, you could do so through this mechanism. You could also, if you want to, and again, just throwing out possibilities, you could include just a civil citation for people who repeatedly refuse assistance, but you need not even do that. And again, all of this is, it's just an option, something that you may want to consider. There's, it's nothing more than that.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Swatier.
So I, I think that this is a good place for asking some of our service groups to help us out, like the Chamber of Commerce, whether it's the MAMA group or the Kelseyville, Main Street Association, whatever. I think that those groups want to see their businesses succeed in reopening. And I think that we can have that be the base of the preliminary education, if they're interested in taking that on. I think that when we are getting complaints, that we should go out and, and let's problem solve. We're not here to tell you're doing something wrong. We're going to try to problem solve and see what's going on. Is, is it, was it just a, an incident, that isolated incident of this complaint? Or is this a, a constant? How can we solve this? How can we fix this? And at this point, I don't think we need any officer necessarily. I mean, we have a list of volunteers that we've been putting together to help out with contact tracing, with testing. I'm sure we can use some of those volunteers with the knowledge of what social distancing looks like, to be able to go to a store and say, have you put lines down on the floor? Can you do appointment? Like whatever the, the, the possible solutions are. But I think, I hate to see code enforcement being used for this. I mean, we already kind of asked them to help us out with the fire prevention. I do not want to take that away. But I think that this is, this is, this is a, an opportunity for a collaborate, collaboration discussion, not a wag the finger saying you're doing something wrong. And I think that, that our chambers could potentially provide the extra help to make sure that everybody is on the same path.
For a business organization, yeah.
Yeah.
Supervisor Brown?
So how many cases do you anticipate we, we might have? How many complaints that you anticipate, Dr. Pace?
Oh, you're still on mute.
Um. You know, I don't know. It's, uh, I'm not sure. You know, we get, uh, we get several, you know, we get a handful a day right now before the opening. So I think it'll be, you know, I think it depends on, on how, how it goes with the masking. People often are recalling now about the mask, that they're frustrated that people aren't wearing masks. They feel unsafe. So that's part of it. And then the social distancing part in some of the stores. So I, I expect probably, you know, a dozen a day. I don't know. Something like that probably.
So, um, so I, and I, it was kind of a rhetorical, I don't know either. I don't know. I wouldn't expect you to know, but we can't use code enforcement. We just, we just can't. You know, they got, I got some numbers. Code enforcement, 60 open cannabis cases right now. 28 of them are in Spring Valley. And that's, you know, way out in the middle of nowhere. You know, they've got a lot of stuff going on. And, but you know what? You've got five board members who are getting paid for the whole week. So maybe there's five of us that could go out and do it. I think it's not reasonable to expect the business owners to go out and, you know, piss off fellow business owners by pretending to be police. And, but if, I think if board members want to take this responsibility up and do the education and go out there and actually talk to the business owners as they're trying to operate, I think that's probably the best method and it wouldn't cost us anything extra.
Supervisor Scott? I, I would agree to that. I would be willing to go down and educate our public. But I also think that our Main Street associations and our chambers, they would also be willing to assist us with this because, you know, they want their businesses and their, and their shops open as much as everybody else does. So I think definitely, let's not at this point, use our code enforcement. They have bigger things that they need to be looking at this time of year with our cannabis and our, and our fires and that we need to be looking at other avenues to, to educate, more of an education thing. And, and I don't believe at this time, I don't, I don't believe we should have teeth in it. I think it's an education and as many things that we have, it's a living document. And if things aren't working, then we bring it back and look at it again.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. I think our chambers, our business organizations, we've all been working on this together here. I think it is an education campaign and I agree with code enforcement has enough to do on the plate that we have filled up for them on a yearly basis, including what's coming up fire season here. So completely agree with that. And what it looks like, I don't know, but it seems pretty simple. We all patronize our businesses. We are all supporters on this board to local business. We eat and shop here locally and will continue to do that. So I think that's an easy process to start up. Subaj Swatier, I don't know if you had anything, but.
No, actually I was gonna, since we brought up the business associations, wondering if we can provide some time for Ms. Fulton to maybe talk on that.
Yeah, I think what we're going to do here, if there's no more from the board, we'll go ahead and kind of open it up. But I think the overall thing is education. We all agree upon that. We know that we've got to do everything we can to protect the vulnerable community. And we've done that from day one, I think. And just as education partners of business. I know myself here locally, I know one of our largest stores was implementing something immediately. Seen a change in that. And so appreciate the, the self compliance and other stuff in the conversation as we open it up. But hopefully that'll also help us accelerate through stage two into stage three, anything that we could do in, in trying to slow the spread of this thing as it does come through. So we'll go ahead and if there's no more conversation from the board, we'll open it up to, to the room here.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for the lengthy discussions on this issue that's facing all of us on a daily basis. I agree that our business associations and our two chambers would be, and I'm speaking for all of them right now, but I think we're all on the same page. We need to get these businesses open. We want them to be compliant. And quite honestly, I think they all want to be compliant. And something that popped into my head, and I sent Scott De Leon a little text a minute ago about what about the ramp monitors? I don't know what their status is in terms of if they're volunteers or they're paid. I'm not really sure. But it seems to me that they might be a good resource for a compliance information person. And maybe that's a term that could be used. But certainly I know from the standpoint of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, we posted, or we are posting a press release of Dr. Pace last evening. I took a little bit of liberty with it. I read through it last night. I pulled out four items that I thought were extremely relevant to get to the eyes of the business people immediately. So I pulled those out and that's the way my staff is putting that out today with those four items highlighted and then a click through link to the entire press release. And of course, those four items that I had pulled out to highlight, if you will, are very relevant to what Dr. Pace has been talking about with the forms that should be, that are informational and should be filled out by each and every business. I was somewhat encouraged, I believe I saw in, in the press release, something about the date of June 4th for businesses that they can anticipate further relaxation, if you will. But I know for a fact, I have had two direct emails from people who are Lake County residents who felt very uncomfortable going into businesses here. And as a result, one went to Petaluma. In fact, I believe that was one of our blue collar committee people. And the other one was a lady who went to Ukiah and listed seven different businesses that she spent money in over there. She said she would rather have spent it in Lake County, but the businesses that she was going to or had tried to go to were not wearing masks. So there is that faction in our community that is uncomfortable. And while anyone can debate the mandatory use of masks, which will be an ongoing conversation, the point is that we need the businesses open. They need to be open. We don't need to lose any more businesses to this pandemic. They're important to our communities. So. So yes, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce will be a conduit for information and communication to businesses. And we will certainly, um, communicate and work with all of the business associations, including the Clear Lake Chamber, to get this work done. It's just too important for all of us. And, um, so you have, you have our offer of assist, assistance. And, um, we're there when you want us to step up, which we'll be doing immediately. That press release will go out today in our regular e-news. And I'll make it a point to send it. Although all the business associations are on our general email list, I'll make it a point to send it personally to each of the business associations separately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate it. And obviously knew that, uh, you would step up. And I know the other organizations we've been talking about is reopening. So thank you for your commitment. greatly appreciate it. Okay, uh, Jake, can we go to, I see we've got four hands up here. Could we go with the next, next, uh, raised hand?
Uh, yes, the next raised hand I have is from Brian Dubrowski.
Okay, go ahead, Brian. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Here we go. So hearing what Dr. Pace has to say about enforcement of, in staffing, it almost sounds as if there's not enough staffing to even enforce, you know, mandatory masking clause in the first place. So if I'm understanding this correctly, what's the point in making it mandatory and not a recommendation? I mean, in my head, uh, public safety benefits more from arresting criminals. Did you guys hear that?
Nope.
A kind of glitch.
Yeah, you definitely went in and out.
Okay, so I'll say it again. It's very quick. So hearing what Dr. Pace has to say about enforcement staffing, it almost sounds as if there's not enough staffing to even enforce this in the first place. So if I'm understanding this correctly, what's the point of making this mandatory and not a recommendation? Public safety benefits more from the arrest of criminals than it does enforcing a mask mandate, in my opinion. And then my other question is, does the state require mandatory masking right now? Because I thought we were trying to go to the state recommendations.
I don't know, Dr. Pace, uh, you want to answer that one? Sure, I, I can answer that. So the state does not require, is not mandatory under the state order. Most of the counties in the area are requiring it. Mendocino County, Sonoma County, so, um, and most of the counties down in the Bay Area as well. So it's different in different counties. And, um, you know, I think Melissa's point is really good. I, I get a lot of that same feedback that people are afraid to go to the store, choosing to make different, or making different choices based on their assessment of risk. And, uh, so that's part of what we're trying to do is just give clear messaging and just make it straightforward. And to sort of take the onus off the store owner a little bit, or the restaurant owner, and just say, you know, this is what we're expecting. It's not like they're having to, uh, be in that position. So anyhow, that's, that's the thought process. But no, the state does not require it. All right, go ahead, Jake.
Okay, the next hand I see up here is Melissa Fulton. I don't know if she wanted to go again. No, okay.
She's good, she said.
All right, the next hand up we have is from Michael.
Michael Green, okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, um, yeah, we, we need enforcement. I know that's been the dirty word in all of this, but it, it, it really shouldn't be. Anytime, uh, enforcement of all our health and safety regulations are pretty much on an honor system ninety-nine percent of the time anyway. Yet we don't say we're not enforcing those health and safety regulations. You can soften that language. You can call it compliance monitoring. You can call it complaint-driven enforcement. And we do those things already when we talk about code enforcement for cannabis, uh, when we talk about, uh, no shoes, no shirt, no service in a restaurant setting. So there's an unfortunate dichotomy right now in the community where it's like, well, you know, if we don't bring in the deputies and handcuff people, then we're not enforcing it. Where there, there are many stages to enforcement. And when you talk about public health education again, the first thing you want to do is get out there and educate everybody what the orders actually say. But I do think you do need to have some enforcement mechanism and some complaint-driven enforcement capacity. And if environmental health can't do it all by themselves and code enforcement is tasked, we still have some cannabis tax revenues. There are still some extra help, uh, positions you could talk about. If you don't have current staffing to address it, that's totally understandable. Uh, I think there's a long need demonstrated this year for some type of staffing to support the enforcement of, of these orders. So part of it, uh, the large part of this is how do you frame the message to the people? And I think unfortunately, we have some challenges there because people, uh, kind of confuse enforcement with jailing people. Uh, but in public health realm, enforcement means something else. So I think public education is number one on there right now. And I'm glad to hear the chambers and, and the stuff like that will be stepping up. Those CDC documents, uh, from the previous agenda item are going to be really helpful with that. But I, you know, Dr. Pace needs staffing. You know, we do need more worker bees in the field. We do need people to educate. And we do need people from time to time to go talk to those people that just refuse to comply. So I, I would like to see you guys talk about, uh, throwing a little staffing toward, uh, toward him or toward code enforcement to help out with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Jake, let's go to, um, the next hand up, Kathleen.
Yes, it looks like the next hand we have up is, uh, Kathleen McCarthy.
Hi there.
Hi.
You know, Michael, uh, just said pretty much everything I was going to say. Just the main point that I think that the board can do is provide clear, consistent messaging that public compliance is of the utmost importance. And along with businesses having clear expectations posted of what they expect their patrons to do. And, um, I just wanted to take a moment to say, you know, I am a teacher. And I know you were all students at one point. And we all knew which teachers enforced rules and which ones didn't. And, uh, which ones, which teachers would really back up what the administration was trying to get students to comply with. And, um, so I think that that's why that consistent message from our board is very important. Not to say that we're all children, but people try to take these way up sometimes. Um, and also, on the same vein, in education these days, we're not punishing kids so much. We're not making them sit on the bench at recess. Instead, we take the time to pull them aside and reteach them the expectations so they can do that successfully. And, um, looking forward to reteaching from our board and our community leaders. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kat. Okay, go ahead, next hand, Johnny.
Oh yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
So just a question, because I know it obviously sounds like the masks are going to be enforced no matter what. How long are they going to be enforced for? What's, what are you going to base your decision off of to remove that mandatory mask wearing? I mean, right now, we only have eleven cases, cases. And we're only, we're almost three months into this pandemic. I mean, I really don't, I mean, it's, it's whatever. It's going to happen either way. The numbers out there show that masks aren't really going to do anything. Yeah, that, they might say they might prevent it a little bit less or whatever, but our numbers aren't high. So I want to know how long they're going to be enforced for? And what's, what are you going to base your decision off of to remove that mandatory mask wearing? That might help a lot of people accept the idea of being forced to wear a mask.
Thank you for the question, Johnny. I know, um, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, Dr. Pace? Sure, um, yeah, that's come up a couple of times. Supervisor Brown brought it up too. You know, I don't have a good answer for that. There's no timeline for sure. I, I think probably the way to think about this is it's really tied with the notion of a public health emergency. And the states under a public health emergency right now, locally, we are as well. I think once that gets removed, then, uh, you, you know, we're, we're, we're following a lot. That's a, there's a lot of complex things we're trying to follow, a lot of which were part of the, um, the whole attestation that went in, the public health benchmarks. And when those are looking good consistently, we will remove the public health emergency and the masks will no longer be relevant. And, um, uh, so I don't know, that's the best I can say. I, I, um, nobody likes to wear these things. And, um, so there's not, I, I think it's, uh, we would like to end it as soon as possible. But my number one priority is the public health and the safety of the people, especially the vulnerable people. So if it looks like it's important to do that, then we'll, I'll keep recommending it and keep, keep, um, keep it in place. Once, once we're past that stage, happily, I'll throw it out the window with everybody else, so. Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Face. Okay, seeing no more, uh, hands up at this point, um, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board for some more discussion on this issue. Subaj, Swati.
Um, so I, thank you very much to, uh, Melissa. And I hope that's the, um, I believe and hope that it's the same, uh, message that we would receive from all other business associations. Just because it just seems like that's what we have to do anyways to be able to reopen businesses and they want to see businesses be successful. So appreciate, uh, them being part of the, um, solution. And I, I agree with Supervisor Brown. I, if we can each receive, uh, an email or a phone call and say, hey, we received a complaint about such and such, can you please go check in on that? I am more than willing to go check in and have conversations, um, educate and problem solve. And that, that is, yeah, that is exactly what we should be doing.
And we're already, yeah, I, I agree. And we're already all getting those calls. I would be hard depressed if nobody on this board has gotten a call about, uh, one, about not wearing masks, but also, uh, the fear of people, you know, not being able to go into businesses because they're not wearing masks. Multiple calls on a daily basis, um, you know, and it'll continue throughout this crisis. So absolutely, I think that is, yeah, that, that's an easy thing to take care of.
And, and just, uh, real quick as an addition, I, I definitely have heard of those who don't want to shop here because no masks. I wouldn't be surprised if there's the opposite reaction of, I don't want to shop here because I have to wear a mask.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're, we're going to get both sides of the spectrum at one point or another.
Subaj, Scott.
Um, do you think it would be possible, since we are maybe asking the chamber and other associations to help us to have like a Zoom training? So we're all going in with the same messaging, um, doing the same thing when we go into these businesses? That'd be something the health department could do?
You know, so, um, so what I'm getting here is that what we're recommending is, is that when we get complaints, we'll send it to the supervisor of that district. And that what we want to do is set up a training for the supervisors and potentially any of the business organizations that would help you do that. But that you, like, each of the supervisors will be coordinating the education efforts in their district. Is that what I'm understanding? Yeah, I, I guess it's a, it's a conversation we're having right now for sure, um, with our local businesses. You know, you have the Milltown Area Merchants Association Chamber, um, all the other things. I guess that's more of a discussion we need to have, but that sounds like the beginning and process at some point. Go ahead. But just to finish, I'm sorry Supervisor Scott, but, uh, we're happy to coordinate something. I'm just not, I'm just trying to get clear on what it is we need to be, how, how we need to, uh, frame it. But that's a great idea. We'd be happy to do that.
And, um,
Go ahead, Subaj, Swati.
I think that the business associations are good support services and good messaging services, because that's what they do. Uh, they, they, they constantly send out information to their businesses to let them know what's going on. Uh, and if somebody calls them and say, hey, we need help, we're not able to do certain things, maybe they have the ability to help. Uh, but I think that if there's a complaint, that should come to us and not necessarily to, uh, anyone else. I think that just having the same message and the same, uh, protocol in place that we all have learned and can all follow at the same time. That way, we're not sending mixed messages to, uh, well, District One is doing it this way. District Two is doing it this way. Uh, we, we need to be on the same page so that no matter where people, uh, go to shop, they're going to have a similar experience.
Yeah, masking, social distancing, all, all the same stuff we've been learning throughout the process.
Right.
Which I believe one hundred percent, most, ninety-nine percent of our businesses are going to do the right thing, unless they have a, a view of a mask in a different direction. And then that's where the challenge is going to come in. Did that answer your question, uh, Supervisor Scott, as far as?
Most definitely. I just think it'd be best if we were all on the same page with the same message. So, um, you know, there isn't any confusion in our community, like Bruno pointed out.
So I guess a question, uh, I, I would pose a question to Anita because obviously, um, you're going to have businesses that comply, you're going to educate. And then we're going to get to a point where businesses just, you know, may not comply. And my question would be, uh, from that point, uh, where do we go from there? Because I know we, this was kind of done a little bit in the past where there were inspections in the fire and done other things. But ultimately, it ended up going back to community development, uh, for a certain, uh, you know, for final approval stuff. So, um, Anita, I don't know if you have a comment or, or?
Well, uh, yeah, if, uh, you know, I mean, your, your board can impose and you can do an ordinance, urgency ordinance to impose a civil penalty. You have to be a bit careful here though, because if your board is going to be responding to complaints, your role is going to be just educational, right? It's just going to be, it's not going to be a compliance situation because you couldn't have a circumstance where you go out as a compliance officer, i.e. a public officer under health and safety. And then also hear an appeal of a civil penalty if you wanted to impose one. So I recommend that you keep your role just educational in terms of, you know, a conduit, uh, for assistance, et cetera, to businesses. If, if what your board wants is a civil penalties for, for people who just simply won't, won't self-correct, then I could draft one of those for your board. You may not want that at this point. You may want to see what happens first. That's up to you.
I, I think what we were talking about too is really, and I heard from the entire board, and they can all speak for themselves, which they have, is, yeah, we're really looking at educational piece here. You know, ultimately, um, I think most people are going to comply and, uh, because they want to get open. The sooner we do these things, I think the, the realization is coming. The sooner we do that, we, hopefully this will help us move through the steps even quicker as long as we don't have outbreaks and other things, uh, which will be taken care of by the public health officer. I think that's the direction we're moving. It is just education-wise, uh, to start out with here. Everybody else can speak up, but that's what I've heard.
Yeah, no, I'm good. If I get a complaint, I'll have my way. I don't know what, uh, being on the same page means, but I'll, I'll handle it the way I handle it. But I'm not going to criticize some other board member for handling it or not handling it. I, I get calls from other districts, from people in other districts that aren't happy. And I'm sure you guys do too. But that's, that's the way it is. I'm not going to go by some playbook that, that, uh, the board of supervisors think I should do to, to, uh, honor my responsibility as an elected official.
Yeah, just same messaging. So, you know, obviously, uh, hopefully, uh, whatever messaging gets out there, it is going to be talking about masking and, um, yeah, having a consistent message, uh, out there is probably the best way to do it. And that, that, that is where the challenge comes in because, um, that's going to be the message that needs to be presented. Subaj, Swati.
And I suggest we, uh, do this similarly to, uh, bringing back the, uh, masking every so often to review when we're going to say, okay, we're done. Uh, let's come back and revisit this two weeks after the opening and let's review some data and see how things are going, whether this is, uh, working the way it is or if we need to do any tweaks.
Absolutely. And I think just common courtesy too, you know, if I get a call about Walmart or, uh, let's say Big Five or anything like that, I just communicate with, uh, with Bruno. with Bruno, um, you know, or Tina or anybody else. So just a process that's, uh, hopefully can always be respected.
So, um, can I just, just want to make sure I understood, thanks. Uh, sorry. I just want to make sure I understand the process that we're going to be doing. So presumably the state will, um, approve our, uh, accelerated opening and will start on Thursday. And, uh, the mandatory masking will be in place at that point. And, um, the social distancing and the, the businesses will be expected to do their self-certification. And then, um, and then we'll, if we get complaints or if you all get complaints, we will refer to the supervisor of that district to proceed with the education. And then we'll, uh, we will do some, we'll get together some training material and maybe do a Zoom training or, or whatever it is that would feel like it would be useful for you all. Uh, as soon as we can get it together and then we'll, um, review again in a couple of weeks to see how we're doing. Yeah, is that what I'm understanding the guidance from the board is?
Yes, that's, that's what I've heard. Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you very much, Dr. Face.
Thank you.
But, um, all right. So we've already, we had our public opinion. So, um, I guess what we got to do Anita is, um, do we need a policy or an urgency ordinance written up in that manner? Or, um, it sounds like, uh, we're all in agreement on how we're going to move forward with here with train Dr. Pace. Uh, taking this on as just an information, uh, education part, uh, from our board and our businesses. So.
I don't think Mr. Chair, you need to take any action as individual board members. You can always assist your constituents. Uh, and all residents of Lake County. So I don't think you need to do anything else. You can't give direction to the private business associations in any event, and it sounds as if they're all very willing to cooperate and work with you. So I think you're done.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate this conversation. Appreciate, uh, the direction we're moving as we move forward on this issue. And, um, I think it's the right thing to do. And correct me if I'm wrong, we've been talking so long about this too. We already did public comment on this, right? Confirm. Okay. Excellent. All right. I just, sorry about that. Um, so we'll go ahead and move on. Um, that seems to conclude that item there. Uh, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next item. Our five point six item, our nine fifty AM consideration of the first amendment to the emergency occupancy agreement between the county of Lake and the Lamplighter motel for COVID nineteen emergency. Isolation housing for maximum compensation amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred authorized chair to sign. Social services is the one who, um, brought this up. So is Crystal. Here at this point in the room?
Yes, I am.
Hey, hello Crystal. How are you today?
I'm well. How are you?
This afternoon. I know we talked to you earlier, but, um, go ahead and, um, present your item.
I'm sorry. I was not paying attention when I first heard my name. So which item am I presenting?
Five point six, consideration of the first amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So we are bringing this to the board today, um, in an effort to extend our program for, um, project room key uh, in Clear Lake and we are reaching the end of our first agreement. And so are, uh, looking to have the board approve an amendment to continue it through the twenty-second.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the board?
Yeah. Just wanted to clarify because, um, Ms. Marketan said, uh, the twenty-second, the twenty-second of June.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct. Yes.
Since, since we haven't passed the twenty-second of May. And, but I did have a question about that because I know from the state, they said that we could, uh, be reimbursed through May thirty-first. Did they extend it to June twenty-second?
I'm not, I'm not sure. However, we are still, we're not into using, um, the FEMA funding yet.
Okay.
And so we're still operating with the hundred thousand dollars for project room key.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Supervisor Brown?
Um, uh, Crystal, did you say how many are, are there right now?
We have had eight. We had three new people, or actually it's been nine and, um, three new people, uh, yesterday and then, um, today. So that would, uh, bring us up to twelve.
Okay. And what is the capacity again?
Fifteen.
Okay. So we're really close to that. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been fluctuating up and down throughout.
Well, no, I, I guess the, the distinction I want to make is that, you know, this is an agreement with a hotel that we're actually using. And, you know, they're, as opposed to one that we're paying more for and not using it at all. So there, I think I'm glad that, to see that we're using it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, any more questions from the board? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this up to, uh, the public. So Jake, if you go ahead and open up the room, please.
All right. Uh, so I'll unmute the floor here. The floor isn't muted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing, uh, hearing none Jake, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve first amendment to the emergency occupation agreement between the county of Lake and the Lamplighter motel for COVID nineteen emergency isolation housing for a maximum compensation amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Can we please do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Thank you. Moving right along to our next item here. It's a ten AM item. I know we're a little behind here. Um, so, uh, presentation and proclamation, uh, designating the month of May as Cal, twenty twenty as CalFresh Awareness Month. And B, presentation or proclamation of designation of the month of May, Older Americans Month in Lake County, presented by the Board of Supervisors. I didn't know if we had any supervisor would like to, uh, present, read these items.
I, I don't mind reading one.
Supervisor Scott, would you be, uh, interested in reading, uh, the CalFresh?
Mr. Chair, can we welcome Rachel Dillman to the room who's representing the CalFresh program from Lake County Social Services?
Absolutely, uh.
Hi Rachel. Nice background.
There you go. Excellent. Welcome Rachel. Thank you for joining us and I apologize, uh, for, we're a little behind schedule here. So thank you for hanging in with us.
That's okay.
So you ready for me?
Yes.
Right. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California proclamation designing the month of May twenty twenty as CalFresh Awareness Month. Whereas CalFresh provides monthly food benefits to help low-income residents gain access to healthy foods. Participation, participants can play a critical role in improving the health and wellbeing of our population. And whereas in light of the state's unprecedented response to the coronavirus disease two thousand nineteen and the expensive needs for the result across the state, this year's CalFresh Awareness Month will emphasize the critical role that CalFresh has and will continue to play in providing nutrition assistance to millions of California households with low income during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas every dollar in CalFresh generates a dollar seventy in economic activity, providing economic benefits to local communities. And whereas twelve thousand four hundred thirty-seven individuals in Lake County are receiving CalFresh benefits totaling over one point five million per month. And many residents newly eligible due to the financial impacts of COVID nineteen. And whereas the Lake, the County of Lake Department of Social Services recognizes the need to reduce hunger and the impacts of COVID nineteen by increasing access to participation in food assistance benefits and is committed to the outreach and public awareness campaign. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of May twenty twenty as CalFresh Awareness Month. Passed and adopted this day, May nineteenth, twenty twenty, and then signed by the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rachel.
Thank you. Um, so I'm Rachel Dillman and I'm the CalFresh Program Manager for Lake County Social Services. And I wanted to thank the board for this proclamation and just take a minute to encourage anyone who is food insecure in Lake County to please apply for CalFresh benefits. Um, I know applications are in high demand right now. Um, in the state of California, we've seen almost a crippling in the number of CalFresh applications. Uh, many people are in need and my staff are working very hard to make sure those applications are processed timely. Um, something important for the public to know is that households that would normally receive a small CalFresh issuance due to some income are now receiving the maximum allotment monthly through emergency allotments. For example, a household of two who might only receive sixteen dollars during the COVID disaster in California is receiving three hundred and fifty-five dollars a month. So now is a good time to apply. If you were previously eligible for a small amount and thought it wasn't worth it, you will get much more right now. Um, the best place to apply is at calfresh.org. That's, uh, or excuse me, getcalfresh.org. There's also smartphone apps and you can also reach us at seven zero seven nine nine five four two zero zero, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, and we can give you information on other ways to apply. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I thank you for everything, uh, from CalFresh and Rachel. Thank you very much for your hard work. And, you know, you pointed out directly, it couldn't be in more need right now. I think both these proclamations we're doing today affects a majority of our population. So thank you very much to everybody in your department and your organization who are doing the hard work. So thank you. Okay, we'll move to, uh, part, uh, B. Uh, for the proclamation for the older, designating the month of May for older Americans and we'll have Supervisor Sabatier read through that proclamation.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California proclamation designated the month of May twenty twenty as Older Americans Month in Lake County. Whereas the County of Lake includes roughly twenty thousand citizens aged sixty and older. And whereas the area agency on aging is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements. And whereas the older adults in Lake County play an important role by continuing to contribute experience, knowledge, wisdom and accomplishments. And whereas our older adults are active community members involved in volunteering, mentorship, arts and culture and civic engagement. And whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments. And whereas our community can provide opportunities to allow older citizens to continue to flourish by emphasizing the importance of elders and their leadership by publicly recognizing their continued achievements, presenting opportunities for older Americans to share their wisdom, experience and skills, recognizing older adults as a valuable asset and strengthening American communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Lake County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims May twenty twenty to be Older Americans Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to rec, to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. Passed and adopted that this nineteenth day of May twenty twenty.
Thank you very much, Bruno. Greatly appreciated. I, I don't know, I don't see anybody. Do we have anybody in the room?
I have a, I have a couple of words. This is Crystal.
Okay, go ahead, Crystal.
Good morning or good afternoon, I should say. Um, as the executive director for, uh, area agency on aging for Lake and Mendocino counties, um, have just a couple of con, uh, comments. With the increase in meals served through Lake County senior centers being at thirty-six percent more than normal throughout COVID nineteen response, we would like to thank the centers and their volunteers, many of whom fall into the older American category for their tireless efforts. Older Americans fill a vital role in helping to ensure the most vulnerable in our community are being cared for. And we want them to know that we appreciate them and certainly cannot do it without them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Crystal. I really want to thank you for, uh, giving a shout out to all the senior centers and everything that they're doing here, especially in the county. So, um, greatly appreciate it. I know they're serving just an unbelievable amount of meals on a daily basis to the folks that need it the most.
They really are.
Community. They're, they're doing a great job throughout the county. So.
Thank you for recognizing them.
Okay, uh, moving right along with our agenda here, we have, um, item five point eight, our ten oh five item, consideration of discussion of direction to use the juvenile hall for housing navigation hub. And so this was put on by Supervisor Scott and Supervisor Sabatier.
Supervisor Scott, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll start. Um, a few months back, I went and, um, visited the juvenile hall, trying to see what we could do with that facility to help our, um, our friends that are here experiencing homelessness. And, um, after that time, I guess there's been some work done on the center. Um, and I think right now is a time to bring it to the board to see if we want to pursue this, um, with staff time. I think right now we have, uh, many that are, um, gaining stability and structure in our COVID nineteen center and room key. And I think having a plan for after they leave that facility, I think would be best to be able to provide services for them now that they're already, um, seeing what it is to be stabilized. So I think that along with maybe the juvenile center and Hope Center in, um, Clear Lake may be a good option, um, to help these people continue to move forward and be successful in our community.
Okay, goes Supervisor Sabatier.
And so I'll, I'll add to that, that we started these conversations, I want to say almost six months ago. Uh, and had an invitation with, um, Todd Metcalf from Behavioral Health. We did a tour of the juvenile hall center. Uh, as many of you know, juvenile hall centers are closing down all around the state. We're using Tahama, uh, juvenile hall center. Used to use the Mendocino one before that. Uh, they're just, uh, they're, they're, juveniles that are going through that system are being pushed through a different style of system today. And it's not very likely at all that our juvenile hall center will come back and be what it was before. So we have a center that is very underutilized. It's utilized for classrooms, uh, for, um, uh, I'm going to say it wrong, uh, the day, uh, the day program. I don't have the right word. But for probation to use as their, um, as their place to congregate with, uh, those they need to meet. They have a classroom that they utilize. They have a little lounge area. But none of the rooms are being utilized. Uh, none of the commercial kitchen is being utilized. And it's not the kind of facility that can be turned into an office space necessarily. This is definitely made more into a dormitory type of status. So we walked through and there was some good ideas about transitional housing possibilities. Uh, maybe even looking at, uh, uh, more of a psychiatric ward. But at this moment in time, we have some programs that are running in our county that have proven to be very successful. And we can start with project restoration where they have utilized a program to turn people from unstable housing to stable housing. And we're seeing more of those starting to happen, uh, with the Hope Center being worked on in Clear Lake. Uh, there's a lot of activity that's starting to migrate north as well. Hope Harbor is definitely one of those as well, though that's congregate living. So slightly different, but still providing almost a first step scenario for getting people off the streets. I think that once, right now we're in a, a, a fortunate situation that the state has provided us with some funding to be able to do some of those things. But as soon as that funding is gone, what happens? And that was the question that, that we were asking. And does that mean that people just get dropped right back off on the streets where they came from? Or do we have an opportunity for them to pursue to get to that stable housing situation? I do not believe, and I'm going to say this is my personal opinion, but I don't believe that Supervisor Scott is asking for this either. We are not asking that the county take charge in having a homeless facility. We are asking that since this facility is underutilized, that we look at being able to turn this into a true facility that can be used by whether it's a faith-based group or whether it's a nonpart profit group, that def, that then they run a program to help facilitate the transition that we're looking for. Uh, I think it's an opportunity, uh, but we didn't want to waste anymore, not waste. We didn't want to use any more of our department head's staff time without going through the board first. As you know, we have a policy of no more than eight hours, uh, before passing it by, uh, for board approval to continue. What we're looking for is, these are some of the steps that we're looking for. First is we, we want to look for, uh, possibly a consultant to help us know what do we need to do to upgrade the facility? So in so it meets the standards for a housing navigational hub. If, once we have that amount, then we're gonna go looking for that amount to see if it's possible to get that. Again, I don't think we are looking to use any of our general fund. That will be up for discussion. But there's definitely some funding out there, which includes the COC as well as others. And so then we can see, is it possible to upgrade the building? If it's possible, then we're gonna start looking for partners who would like to manage that kind of program in the facility. So right now, we're just asking for more time to be spent so that we can go ahead and take a look to see if it's even feasible for us to move forward and upgrade the building and so on and so forth. So there's nothing necessarily set in stone as to what is going to happen there, but we're looking for approval from the board for more staff time so we can get more information to know if this is possible to move forward with or not.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. You know, obviously, I think you touched on a couple of the issues. I think the one question for the long-term issue, obviously, I think exploratory is a good idea. You know, this is something we've talked about, homeless issues and other things throughout the county. We know we do have quite a homeless population here, and transitional housing and other things would definitely help ease that, hopefully. The one question I'd have, just long-term, you mentioned a little bit about it, Bruno, is Juvenile Hall. If Juvenile Hall was to come back, you know, how we would address that if it was needed where some of these other counties that we currently send our juveniles to, what do you think of long-term plans on that?
I don't have an answer for you on that, other than the direction I'm seeing, that we are seeing is the opposite of that. I would have to ask Rob Howe, Sheriff Martin, as to what would be needed to bring it back. But I know that we have had the conversations with Rob Howe, and I see he's on with us today. We have spoken with Lars Ewing about this. Sheriff Martin was involved in our preliminary conversation. And just to add one little bit more, it's not something that's been discussed more, but I know that I'm not looking for a freebie. I'm looking for those that want to get themselves into a better place. I'm looking for those that can be held accountable to process through this program. And so I know that it's been brought up as well about looking at mimicking Veteran Court and making a, and I hate the name, but Homeless Court, where we can have a level of support and a level of expectations of how people are progressing through the program. So that's another little side program that could occur at the same time to make sure. But I don't have an answer to your question.
Just wanted to put it out there. Supervisor Brown?
So yeah, I'd like to hear what Rob has to say too, but I seriously doubt that it would come back there.
Yeah.
And the way the state legislature is going, maybe we could use the jail because they're making crime illegal now, so, or crack legal. So they probably won't be using the jail much, the way things keep going. But just to give a little history on this, so about six years ago, there was a facility that was looking at a drop-in type facility for behavioral health, and they were looking at a building in Kelseyville on Church Street. And so naturally, all, you know, the businesses in the community there was kind of, they weren't real crazy about the idea. We met with them, and Todd, or I'm sorry, not Todd. Todd was, this was before Todd. It was Kevin Thompson. And then so we started working on that option of the juvenile facility. We'd been out there, and we'd talked about it, and we looked at it, and it seemed like a, like a good plan. And Tina might remember that, you know, when she first came into office, I shared this with her, that that was, you know, an option that we're looking at. It was out by the hospital. There was a lot of, a lot of good reasons to have it out there. And nothing, nothing ever came about it. And I mentioned it to Bruno when he first came on, and that was something that we had looked at. And just, you know, this is the first time I've heard it come back, so I'm glad that we're looking at that as a possibility. I think it is a good possibility, so.
Okay. And I think what the request for you today is just to explore what the opportunities are for us, which I think is a great idea, because there are, there is a lot of funding out there that's been coming down that may give us an opportunity to tap into. So one more step forward for.
Yeah, and I do want to add, we did have a lot of public input, you know, when it was suggested in Kelseyville and, you know, and other areas. And I think we need to, you know, we need to respect the community wherever it goes, that all of the property owners and businesses and everybody get an opportunity to weigh in on that, because there's a lot of perception on a facility like this, and some of it, some of it may not be accurate. And, you know, as far as, you know, having people just wandering around out there, we can have transportation. There's a lot of things that we could do to accommodate this where it would be, wouldn't be any more noticed than it did when it was the juvenile facility. So I think no matter where you put them, put the facility, it's going to be controversial. And we can minimize that by just laying it all out there and addressing the concerns of the community. And, but it's something that's not gonna go away, so.
Absolutely. It's only gonna be compounded.
I had, well, the other day from somebody, a homeless guy that's sitting in front of a food center, and the person said, you gotta do something about it. I said, what do you want me to do, move him a block down? They gotta go somewhere, you know, as long as they're not harming. So he's sitting there relaxing, you know, I mean, I, none of us want to see that, but we're not gonna resolve it. It's gonna be an issue no matter what, so.
Yeah, and anything we can do to help with the situation is best. So I see that we do have some folks, obviously, that are very inclined, so I'd like to call on Lars. Lars, you got a comment? Go ahead, Lars.
Yeah, thank you very much. My only comment, there's obviously a lot of work that would need to be done to make this functional. But it seems to me that if the board were to direct staff to move forward, it seems like an appropriate next step after getting some preliminary information would be to come back to the Space Committee. And just wanted to offer that. I apologize that I had not offered that to Supervisor Scott or Sabatier prior to this, but I think that would be an appropriate next step after we get some information. That's all I wanted to offer.
Okay. Thank you very much, Lars. And I know.
Supervisor, this is Rob Howe. Can I speak for a second?
Okay, yep, go ahead, Rob. Yes.
Yeah, I've spoken to both Supervisors Sabatier and Scott about this briefly, anyway. And I know this is pretty preliminary, just to answer a couple of questions. I believe both Supervisor Sabatier and Brown have it right, that the likelihood of a juvenile hall coming back's the way California, the direction California is going is pretty, pretty remote. I don't really think that is a big issue. There are some questions moving forward. I know this is very preliminary, but, you know, the idea of cohabitating the building with a DRC, that's what we have out there, the Day Reporting Center.
A reporting center.
I thought you'd get it. So again, there's certainly some conversations. It is an ideal location. It's ideally set up. And my understanding is what we're looking at is using the portion. It is a large portion that's unused right now. So.
Okay.
Really in support of at least the discussion, and if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll go ahead and, that, we'll go ahead and open up the room and see if we get some, Lars, do you have another comment or? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the room. Jake?
Yeah, all right. So I'll unmute the floor here. The floors are muted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Shannon Kimball Off.
Hey, Shannon, we can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to add a little bit about that I think it's, why I think it's a good location. We have, from the last pit count, five hundred and seventy-two people who identified themselves as experiencing homelessness on January twenty-seventh in twenty twenty. Of those, the average length of stay in Lake County was seventeen point nine eight years. So these are folks that consider Lake County home. And one of the things that we know from having operated the Warming Center for the last five years is that people not only consider Lake County home, they consider geographic areas within the county home. So there are people that consider North Lake County home, and there are people that consider South Lake County home, even though they're experiencing homelessness. So in order for us to truly make strides forward in ending homelessness in our community, we're going to need a navigation, a housing navigation hub, transitional housing, both in the South and the North County. Hope Center is going to be opening up, we hope, September first in South County. And the COC has said that they want to be able to direct funds from the COC toward projects in both North and South County. Now that we have, as of last week, HMIS up and running, we're going to be able to apply for a significantly greater state funding and federal funding. So the resources are out there, and we are now poised to be able to receive those resources and use them in a way that can strategically make a difference for those experiencing homelessness in Lake County. So I just wanted to add those things to it and to say that if there are specific questions that I can help with, I am available.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jake, do we have any other hands up or comment at this point on this item?
It doesn't look like we have any hands. I can unmute the floor again?
Yep, one more time, and then we'll bring it back to the board.
All right, so the floor isn't muted once again. I don't actually see any unmutes. So it looks like everyone is still muted.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board then for, for direction here. Supervisor Sabatier?
And it wasn't mentioned, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I always forget the exact number. I know when we did our report that we submitted to the state for reopening in there, there was Juvenile Hall with eighteen rooms. I believe there are more rooms than eighteen. If Director Howe is available to let us know exactly how many rooms, I think it might be around twenty-four rooms, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, it would actually depend on if you want to open, if you're looking at opening all three wings. I believe it's in the, in the high twenties total rooms.
Right. And again, it's all about what's, what's the cost? And do we want to phase this in one wing at a time? And so I just wanted to let the board know and the public aware as to what a capacity we're talking about potentially.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bruno. As far as an action item on this, we don't need a motion, just direction would be good, correct, with the majority of the board?
Yeah, consensus to move forward.
Yeah, I think we've all said that we think this is a good thing to move forward with, to bring back to the board at a later date. Definitely, I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
And I think, I think we've heard that from, from all four today, so thank you very much. All right, moving on to that, we got our calendars, and then I will read off closed sessions. Let's go to our calendars, please. Supervisor Sabatier?
All right, thank you very much. Tomorrow morning, I have, I'm gonna sneak into the Lake EBC. There are some agenda items on there that are a result of us approving the Lake County Broadband Master Plan. So I'm gonna sneak into there, but right af, soon thereafter, I'm gonna sneak out to our LAFCO meeting that we are having tomorrow. And then I haven't, I have it on my calendar, but I can't say I've received any emails on the Ava. Have you received anything? Did I miss something?
Oh, you know what? I was looking at my calendar too. No, I have not.
I take it that's two questions post the meeting, so.
Definitely. We'll follow up on that to get some information out, yes.
Yeah, I missed that one. And then we'll be going to a Marketing Committee meeting over at City Hall in Clear Lake, or at least virtually with Clear Lake the following day. I seem to be fairly open, meeting with the, if the Root Project Room Key is meeting together, the one with the contract that we just amended over at Lamp lighter to discuss how that's working out. And I'm really happy with staff making the necessary changes that we requested to make sure that we had the twenty-four hour security and so on. Later on that day, there's a City Council meeting. And then Friday, Morning DOC, and we are having, ooh, and I need to submit that, we are having our PSPS meeting at four o'clock, three thirty. So I should probably submit my letters so that the agenda.
Three thirty. Yeah. All right, thank you, Bruno. Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow, hopefully, we'll be checking in with the LAFCO meeting also. And then I have a COC meeting in the afternoon at three. On Thursday, I have a meeting at eleven o'clock, working with the youth programs here in Lake County, see what we could do for our youth this summer with the COVID-19. At noon, I have a meeting with the Law Library. And then nothing till back here on Tuesday at one.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
I'm just open. I've got the Blue Collar Committee on Friday, but that's pretty much it. So. I'm gonna get my badge on and go out and check for masks.
Yeah, get your badge on. Yeah, well, you got the mask behind you there, so you'll be all right. Obviously, end up today, do a gender review, and then obviously return emails and stuff, got during the meeting here and phone calls. Tomorrow, DOC briefing in the morning, LAFCO with Supervisor Sabatier. It sounds like Supervisor Scott will be in attendance in that one too. COVID-19, the Recovery Group with Dr. Pace in the afternoon on Wednesday. Thursday, have the State Board of Fire Services, one for, for our quarterly meeting. And on Friday, have the DOC and the external, the PSP Committee meeting, where we can hopefully get that letter back to them. And then ultimately, through the holiday weekend here, we'll be back for our special board meeting on Tuesday. And we'll give an update to our Ava folks to reschedule that meeting. Didn't have it on the calendar here, so we'll take care of that. I did attend yesterday's Region Two call for just a little while, just listening on the updates from the state of California. And we'll be moving through the process, doing that every, every week. Okay, thank you very much. And with that, that'll take us into our closed session, which I will read here in just one second. Okay, closed session eight point one. Conference with Labor Negotiator, Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiator Carol Lechston, and Pam Semick. And B. Employee Organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. Eight point, item eight point two, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section Four, Five, Four, Nine, Five, Six Point Nine D One, FERC Project Number Seventy-Seven, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And I do know that Supervisor Crandall, yes, go ahead, Anita?
Mr. Chair, we were wondering if we could put that over to the next regular agenda closed session, since Supervisor Crandall couldn't be here today?
Yeah, I was gonna read it, and thank you very much for saying that. Out of respect for Supervisor Crandall, we will move it, or would like to request to move it to our next agenda item. Would that be the, would we add that on the twenty-sixth?
Our thought was June second, Mr. Chair.
June second, okay, excellent. Thank you.
Only urgent and COVID items on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Call. Okay.
No, that's fine. June second, that's good. That gives us time to get ready and make sure Supervisor Crandall will be here for that conversation. Eight point three, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section Five, Four, Nine, Five, Zero, Dash S One, John ETL versus Lake County. And by eight point four, Conference with Legal Counsel Decision Whether to Initiate Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section Five, Four, Nine, Five, Six, Nine, D Four, One Potential Case. So, and that, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn, or go into closed session during the regular calendar, go into closed session at this point.
And Mr. Chair, if you can give me five, give me five minutes, can you, a confidential Zoom invite for the closed session?
Okay, Anita, you, you still have your hand up, but I, I think that's just still up there, so just want to make sure for our close. Thank you. All right. See y'all in five minutes.